Okay, the need for someone to have eyes on this plant.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure to say that this is
Yeah.
To prevent someone from being
Correct. This tells you what this, this doesn't tell you, it doesn't change physically walking around seeing the operation. You can't see a air pattern, you can't see or hear a piece of equipment sounding. How many people about? Um, here are sounding like. Alright, that's not going to tell you both personally. Whether that's overheat, low seal, something like that. Physical person checking in, being here, working, operating, still here and hearing vibrations. Where this panel, but it's gonna be like, hey, there's a problem. Or someone being on site checking basically. And down here. That's quite wild.
It'll still be basically a team operation, a team person operation down here. One for safety and redundancy, somebody falls down on that pit. We don't have someone single down there. They're trying to get, uh, both of them, they can't get in that pit, so we have to get on here. They got a very poor signal down there. But there is a, uh, two people need to be here for at least eight hours every day. There's important. And we got a third, we got a problem, so we don't have a, uh, some sort of design process. Pollens. That, um, for home maintenance, uh, the person, you know, like, to take, wait, slide to take away. We really want to avoid, if we can get our slide into Ohio, on stage, all over. A wall off, that we go off over to the period, they kind of, uh, saves us. People. And all that water. Put back in the RI basin where it's De-watering.
Well, this, all of this work, all of this work is done. But one of the more important parts of this, is the, is the plan, the operation plan, all that, uh, this, uh, up and running. Problem.
Yeah, I mean, the, the short story is, we can put it back, back to help us. Um, and get it back in operation, or we can look at it as, you want to plan for the next ten, fifteen, twenty years and make your operation more efficient. Um, Chris said, only the, the, I don't know if you saw the tanker from sitting out there. That two to five times a day full of waste and water. Um, it's about ninety percent more difficult. We want to make it ninety plus percent salt. So that water, when it gets pressed out and go back to your waste treatment, that actually helps the treatment. Because you're pulling out, it's all, all of the light, and the green people aren't supposed to, but they do. That's why everyone says it's flushable white. Um, just because it sits down and drains, it means it goes, and all of that type of stuff, those are the solids we're talking about. Not the waste, that's the human waste, like that, that actually gets pressed, washed out, and back to the pipeline. Um, so yeah, you still start to touch it, but it's primarily debris, um, that you're, that you're filtering. Some of those solids are also sand, rock, um, and animal with, hold the top. Gets sand straight, and sewer, and those are the things that
How much, how much did, uh, speaking of that, how much did I see these, uh? Do I turn the, uh, purpose water or?
The ionized.
Yeah, I don't know what that term is.
So, so just immigration. Always seems to be, hard to say where, where unaccounted for water is coming from. Um, if it is more than, like, come from your well, your, your house, and then through your sewer system. Anything greater than the well number is somewhere other than, of water. So it's, it's an excellent, like, the irrigation, it could be groundwater, stormwater, um, it could be legal dumping. There's all sorts of things that can add to that. Most cities see it in the form of ionized groundwater service. So that's either coming in through a private service line, or a banhole or something that's underground, you can't see. Or it's a storm event that's, it's a crossroad comes into, like, your banhole. That whole surface, which, other, the, the one thing you see, um, in the spring, you'll see your sewer numbers really flying. That's not actually working, well, that's groundwater service water entering your system.
And the city knows how much of difference is between that normal flow and
Oh, yeah. See a nice big line there, spring.
That's true here as well.
Um, yeah, some cities are better back than others. A example, because we've worked with rising quite a bit, um, it seems pretty good. Operation. The daily plant saves. Doctors try to tighten up their selection system to remove that ionized, the patient has, so that's So it becomes a treatment issue. You have, um, for example, your feature design point here is about five hundred gallons down today, treatment. Not very hard to get five hundred gallons down. Think about a big rain event or snow, like a, a one-off, um, coming in. There is, or services, um, but that's clean up. It surprises how much of those four is mine. I don't have, I mean, you guys have seen already, laying out one and a half thousand gallons. Here. From your wells. The ionized, but seeing It's kind of a prompt approach, kind of deal. Got to make sure life system is correct, but you don't have any
Well, I understand when this was, the plant was originally done. For the ionized that comes in, there was a way to redirect it from coming directly into the plant. Don't off to the, the, um, Okay, not the rapid infiltration basin, but the
You can send it to the lagoons, but once it goes to the lagoons, it can't come back in here. Um, and three, it doesn't send it to the network screen, make sure it's longed in. Create a bypass, and you have to have, you have to do that. Um, right now, in the treatment, that, uh, first ring you walk to the white bags, they're testing, I trace them, that's what we're adding into the lagoons to enhance the treatment right now. Um, and help mitigate others. So that's what it takes to be, as a, for L W, on a daily operation, it's not a long-term solution, it's a short-term, well, that, all this work's being done. Um, but that is, that's one of the benefits that you're enhancing that treatment.
Those and those four by four gallon, they're out there, those are the oxygen that we're putting in. Renew, the over, coming in the building, going through the four and a half miles.
That wasn't that, that was the fourth.
The, it's with the force thing, that's been a long
I mean, like, when, uh, a regional operation of the, that kind of the transition issues is, is not, and then you know that part of it, that's the, it's the sound.
Correct, we're, we're doing that as a mitigation, right?
The answer was, okay, I do.
I'm going to go out these four.
Thank you.
Trying to like Well, this is a backup emergency generator. If the, the plant were to lose power down here, it'd kick on automatically, keep the plant running. Um, it gets maintenance, once a year, cat will come out, do all the services on it. It can operate typically when the plant is running for about fifteen, thirty minutes, uh, one day a week, just to keep the fuel fresh and everything else. Um, we just, if we had to use it for a extended period of time, we would just bring a tanker, fill it up, and continue with operations as needed. We'll come down here to the irrigation basins on the train.
So this is what we call the trains. And, uh, the first two are on her, the nice little two on the side are aerated, and then the final two are not aerated. This is to adjust, um, the buttons in the oxygen levels and trying to get sediment and picking the fine to drop down, clear the water to the top. Push out to the lagoon, you push out the RI basin. These are actually very simple, um, basically a four inch PVC pipe with a string filter on top of it. And you just leave a air bubble to come up through here. Um, there's one, two, three, like eight across, and then it's probably fifteen to twenty going down the length of it. You just give me a big, uh, first. See. If they're always running, you don't really need to. Um, sediment basins, you'll have to, I mean, you get sludge, judge it when it starts getting thick, you can pump it out. At least sit one, a foot, foot eighteen inches off the ground, something like that. So you will get the settlement down below those. Um, they just start getting a weird iteration pattern, and you kind of, oh, we gotta, gotta clean them out, you can de-water them, and then just use a tractor truck and suck them out. Um, the city's tractor truck isn't quite strong enough to lick this pipe. Uh, you can contract it out and do it, but my guess is, when you do the sludge removal, like on the lagoons, every ten to twenty years, depending on what the buildup is. You know, this, just add that on, you're already doing something, all the
I agree, that works.
Um, but the sludge is a happy place for biology, because once your wastewater gets out there, it's not perfectly clean. That flood blanket is just another location for the biology to break down more waste. Um, and so it will accumulate over time. So if it gets too thick, then actually your aerators will get into it, that starts turning it up. Um, but you, you need that flood blanket, otherwise you have just a big body of water, and the big body of water will start to have algae and other issues, so the biology, you're it's, it's that, and you, and you want it, um, even if you were to dredge those and line them, you'd still want to feed it with some, with some blood. The other lagoon cells, just to kind of keep that biological, um, activity going.
About the fact that people use those, or
So the chlorine doesn't go in the first two lagoon cell, we're not using there at all, that was still the biology. Um, the third lagoon cell is actually, um, what is used for the land application site. So during the winter, when it's colder, and we're just not having a good treatment, um, at least the last few years, we've been artificially putting chlorine sooner. Because you're not getting enough, um, contact time, and it's not working as well. So we are chlorinating the third cell once the winter gets here. Um, part of that was your gas chlorination system, we're having some other issues, so just trying to make sure we hit the number till it, uh, full life. So you guys had some, some hits, what, what they call, um, too high account, too numerous account, so there's so much whole life still in the waste stream, that they literally couldn't count cultures. Um, so we started in the winter, we had to go to that, so just give it more time to fill up. Um, that was, I think, really just the first year. The first year was about the only time you really had to do the extra chlorination, the third lagoon cell. Since then, everything's been dialed in and hasn't had that humidity, but we did, um, the first year. Um, the, the current gas corals function a little better, they've done more on that system, so just overall, they've been able to fine tune this and keep it happy. And, and kind of make it through. So with the lagoons, if you want, you can walk up there, stay away from the edges, please, that, that liner's smooth. So if you touch it, it's split right in, it is fifteen feet deep, and easy swimming.
Let's look at that font, we have all this, this, the monitors, remote.
So the two lagoons, um, city actually had those lined in. Me. So those kind of got wrapped up. All before the plant. Uh, yeah, those two have a new HCP liner, um, they have not been seepic tested yet, because they got too cold when they were installed. And then the next year, they had, had a failure, and we just can't take them off. These are aware of that, that is on the list of, um, once this stuff's running, so there's, um, one at a time, we pull off out of previous testing. And Yeah, the seepic testing is As the groundwater monitoring well, he, he wants to we're going to do, um, relocate some of those monitoring wells and do it different, there's, there's different people that are watching that. Yeah, well, um, just the original location, the way it's been operated, it was originally but science is offering things that will, uh, like, when I'm a farmer, um, it was well waiting to change, it's exactly
it's how the rest of it happens, so because operationally, um, those final waste streams need to be handled different, we have to test it.
What about the, the, um, erasing there? Like, we got this one thing six years ago, they just, oh, what, that was, so all, all the ones that needed to be replaced on
There are some of these that still need to get
For the sake of time, where are we at?
I mean, just to get an order.
So this is about it. Um, but still one final lagoon cell that, you know, needs to be tested and eventually lined, is my guess. Do need to line, it's likely that a third will at some time. Um, especially because it's a, it's a sway liner, bent night. Anytime you lower the water and bring it back up, and it allows it to dry, it starts creating cracks, and those cracks don't magically fill back up. Um, so eventually, the third lagoon cell will have to be lined, and then chlorination building, there's a, what, our chlorine contact in the big pipe, it leaves the R, those things for you give the chlorine enough time to fill off whatever biology
So what's that, oh
The RI basin, we'll go to that real quick, there's the one, uh, where it comes in from, uh
Yep, we want to show them. Oh, okay. Okay. When you see, uh, and, and where, on the other side, that one.
I'm here, I'm I don't know.
It's a little less noise. Not coming in.
No.
Alright, so these are the, uh, the RI basins, or rapid infiltration basin. Um, there's a total of four, and they're put on a cycle, or water will go into them for three days, it'll settle, start to be put to another, it'll settle. And they'll get six days of set, settling time with three days of filling time, and so, you know, we're trying not to overload. Perfectly, these would all be uniform and symmetrical with flat, even, nice
sand or something underneath them. Um, you can see that we do have some ghosts coming up in here, and use this wheel line. Um, when it's in, uh, when it's in production in the summer, it comes halfway through and cuts in about ten, fifteen feet, right through the middle one of the basins, and then goes back on out.
And that's doing two things, that's bringing in compaction from the wheel line itself, that's pushing down and on into the basin. Um, they're irrigating into it, so it changes up the water texture, this, um, composition that we have here. And, um, it, it interferes with that, uh, nice even, uh, distribution of our water. It'll channelize the pocket and just not give them the percolation that you want to go down into. These are about as small as we can go right now, um, so we're, we're having some challenges, how do we fix that? Um, can we convince Dan Brown to take off that, that last leg of his pivot? Probably not, um, so we're going to have to come up with some way to, um, reshape this, so the pivot will either go across the bridge, or something that we can get that uniform, uh, composition without having a wheel track going through it.
Yeah.
Very much. This visual will give us quite a bit to talk about, besides City Hall for our workshop, I think this is a really supportive source. Any last questions while we're here on site, that can't be answered inside City Hall?
This is an active ditch, right here.
It's an active irrigation ditch, yes, so water comes in, um, it'll connect at the far end, um, into dragon screens, and it gets pushed out the, uh, field. So it, we don't have anything to do with this, and we don't dump into there.
Okay, well, if, that's a time, okay. At this time, I will, um, at five twenty PM, we'll take a recess for the meeting and reconvene at City Hall, where I will call the meeting back to order.
I will call the meeting back to order. If you will do a roll call, Amy.
Mayor Tordani.
Yes.
Councilmember Obina.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
Councilmember Mahoney.
Yes.
Councilmember Bergen.
Yes.
Council President Shay.
Yes.
Thank you.
And this is just a reminder, for anyone in City Hall or on Zoom, uh, please mute your cell phones, except for members and personnel. Um, Zoom, please stay muted until your call is on. Notice of agenda compliance, finding that the regular meeting notice and agenda were posted in accordance with item code seventy-four dash two zero four. Within forty-eight hours prior to the meeting at the Bellevue City Hall, the City Bellevue City Hall Post Office and on the city's website on November sixth, twenty twenty-five.
This was next, we was posted in, towards, if I have no code, seventy-four two.
So. All in favor?
Alright.
Any question, could call in favor again?
Alright, alright.
Alright.
Alright. Okay, thank you very much.
Call for conflict as outlined in IHO code seventy-four dash four zero four, any conflict with tonight's agenda?
None for me here.
No.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to the mayor and council report. Um, I'd like to start us off, and, uh, we haven't met since Comfort Tree happened. So I just wanted to acknowledge, uh, Kristen of the library and all the volunteers, um, who participated in that, city staff. Councilmembers who joined in, it was a really wonderful turnout, um, bigger than last year, I think it just keeps growing, and there's talks of need to expand it, um, along the bypass, so thank you to those who have participated. I wanted to call out a, uh, food drive that's happening, there's a canoe out front at City Hall. Uh, the Scout for America is doing a food drive in, uh, in coordination with the Hunger Coalition, so all food, uh, that has, that is put in the canoe will be donated to the Hunger Coalition, so if you are able to contribute, um, that, that canoe's there. Um, and I'd love to go around the table and just check in with council members and see if you have any updates at this time. Sorry, Diane.
Hi, I have no updates at this time.
Thank you.
Uh, nor do I.
Well, my time is limited, in my next two months, but I, I texted you, uh, a possibility of me resigning. So he can be coming aboard quicker, because he needs to be updated quicker, it's just so much going on. Uh, sewer and water, et cetera. And, uh, I always wanted to get your feedback, if you think it's a good idea. So I, you know, I don't want to, but I think it's the, the best thing for Bellevue. Really, it really has to get him at the speed as quick as possible. And, you know, that, that enable him to get, be involved quicker, and like, you know, so be January sixth or fifth. It is, enable him to be up to speed quicker. Is this an, wait, what, just, uh, see what you think.
Um, I did have a chance to discuss it today, um, and I appreciate all the time that you've given, and I think it feels like now is the time to, to resign, and, you know, we would take a formal letter of resignation from you.
Yeah.
Um, and, uh, just thank you for all the time you've committed so far.
Been a while. I don't know, for twenty years. I can't believe, it's, it's like a restaurant, it's been open for twenty years. It was like, you know, what the hell happened? I got kids that come into the restaurant, I'll have beer and a shot, I go, you can't drink, you're not old enough, Sean, I'm twenty-three, twenty-four. I could drink legally, so. Okay.
Well, thank
I'll do that.
I would be one, okay. So is Hannah anything for you?
Uh, yeah, I had a couple, I wanted to follow up, um, on behalf of this resident concerning, um, how she's trying to deal with some difficulties, um, that she believes certain codes apply to. And you had responded today that you had spoken to various departments, and so I wanted to, uh, get her additional information about the findings you had with each of the departments. Um, and how she would get those specifics.
I think the appropriate thing would be, um, I would direct the department heads to have, uh, direct outreach to her on each of those line items. Um, I did have a robust discussion with our Marshals Department, um, our Community Development Department, um, and I have asked our lawyer, Rick Ellington, to respond to her specifically. So, um, I think I would ask that each department head communicates with her directly, um, as they have been forwarded the email with the information.
Okay, and in the future, how do you recommend folks, uh, I mean, often they start writing to us because there have been difficulties getting response. What, for this type of situation, could we produce, um, for other residents to have a clearer chain of commands? And it took us about a week and a half to respond in any way, so where can we guide, um, residents in the future?
That resident in particular has been and has been receiving response on various issues from the Marshals Office in particular, as things have come up. Um, I think that every situation might merit a different, uh, return time on response, some things are a simple answer to a simple question. Some things that are, that have to do with legal matters, uh, take a bit more time to have those discussions. I think as council members, being as that you receeded on those emails, you at any time, of course, can respond to your constituents. And then ask for the questions, either from your department heads or from the mayor, so I think
Well, I, but just so we can all be clear, we've been told not to contact the staff, so Well, I but just so we can all be clear, we've been told not to contact the staff. So we're saying to contact you. I'm happy to do it.
That's not what you have been told and I will reiterate again. Contacting staff with questions to further ask questions about things that you have is one thing. I've asked council members to not direct staff, which is a different situation in, in, in the way once you've been contacting them. So.
Alright, so I'm happy to, so um, you're saying that this was, this has been handled with the Development Department and the Marshals Office.
The emails that was received has been ordered to and shown to those respective departments for their review and response. Yes.
Okay, and how do we become, how do we know what those responses are? I think we had the same question the, the previous time when someone wrote to all of us. And we had just wanted additional detail about how these things were being educated, right?
Um, there's, I would go to Rick Ellington. I'm waiting on his response to it. Um, I could send responses from the department heads to you guys individually. Um, I did respond to the email. Um, I think there's, again, there's legal elements of it that the city does not give legal advice on.
Oh, sure. I understand that. So nobody else wants any information about this or you're gonna send it first, I mean.
Say if you have specific information or specific questions, that's very helpful. Um, and or I could have department heads forward and or write their responses and, and send them on to all council members.
Okay, and, and again, I bring this up is because she's submitted a public comment in which she's very disappointed.
Which we were going to get to in the public comment period.
Then I will go uh, on from that. And I wanted to just kind of clarify um, that I will be focusing as what I think I can do for the residents, mostly on financial things. And so I will really try to keep out of the way of the plans that are being made, but I will be probably working the most with Amy to keep up with financial transparency on the app of the City Council and the residents.
This is just a reminder that council members do not direct staff.
No, I won't really do through public, uh, public documents.
Public documents, yeah, okay.
So I won't direct or contact any staff. I will work through the public documents.
And as the, I mean, everyone's here, elected to represent and work on the agenda that's ahead of you tonight. So yeah, um, Danny, I would love uh, any updates from you, Alan.
I don't have any particular questions.
Thank you. Jessica?
Um, no. No updates in mind.
Sorry. Thank you all. Um, I will move on to item five. This is public comment. This is for items of concern, not on the agenda. If you are in City Hall, I would ask that you raise your hand, um, state your full name and your address for the record. And uh, keep your comments to within three minutes.
Hi, everyone. Um, my name is Mindy Pereira. And I'm here tonight as a homeowner in Chantrelle subdivision to discuss the eyesore and the mess that is currently behind the new Karl Malone dealership. Since moving into the dealership space, they have put inventory, four by fours, snowmobile boxes and vehicles behind her building. It looks trashy, unsightly and a mess. Every day more boxes and items are stacked there. There is also a dumpster with trash overflowing from the top that is blowing down into or onto the hillside below the dealership and into Chantrelle subdivision. As homeowners, it is degrading our quality of life to have to look at this daily and devaluing our properties. It is totally unacceptable. We are asking that a very tall, solid fence be built from where the current landscaping ends across the entire back of the dealership to hide this mess and keep their trash from blowing down the hill into our subdivision. In closing, I ask the council, what are you going to do about this? How are you going to deal with this? Diane Shay, you are my friend, my neighbor, and a Chantrelle homeowner who was elected to represent the people of Bellevue. You too must live with looking at this mess daily. What are you personally going to do about this for the people of your subdivision? Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. Please.
Hello, everybody. I'm Cliff Pugna. I'm also a homeowner in Chantrelle. I own the home at four one one Timdoy, which is directly below the Karl Malone uh, structure. And I, I will second what Mindy just said, but I would also add uh, of real consequence is the lighting. It's very high. It's very bright. It feels like you're living in a prison yard or something. But that home that I just described, the wall of the house is just glowing with light. And when you look out, you have these bright white lights. Um, I would like to suggest, and I've talked with Mayor Giordani and she's, she has spoken with somebody from Karl Malone. So hopefully there's some mitigation and additionally concerning what Mindy just talked about. Um, but what I'd like to suggest to this board is looking at the Blaine County's uh, recommendations and, and rules. They're very s- uh, sensical. Uh, a business can completely light itself really well, but if the light spills past their property line at, at a direct bulb shining, uh, that would be against the ru- the rules in Blaine County. We live in a county that has a dark sky ordinance and, and our county is, is renowned for its dark skies. And this is the brightest thing in this whole county is this dealership. Bright white lights. They're shielded down a little bit, but if you look down below, you're looking right up at the bulbs. And it's really obtrusive and it's obnoxious. And like Mindy said, it's completely degrading the subdivision and the value of the hopes there. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and Mindy, Cliff, I just want to respond to you together that um, we have received your comments. Um, and I appreciate Cliff, you continually just.
Yeah, unplug it, plug it back in. I think we need new ones.
Right now. Okay, no more hands at the City Hall and no hands on Zoom. I will go ahead and close public comment. And we will move on to item number six. This is our wastewater project workshop. This workshop is a continuation of the killer we had for our City Council meeting in uh, chambers tonight. At our last City Council meeting, we uh, received an update from Great West Engineering uh, through the memo about our membrane bioreactors, the N B R membranes. Um, and the, the life of those, that they're no longer usable. Um, we did discuss the different types of membranes. Um, there is also information about headworks that need to be fixed and there was a council decision to kind of take a pause and have a more comprehensive look. Um, now while we were basing that facility um, in conjunction with the tour. So you guys could get a, a hands on um, kind of look at at, at where we are in the progress and where we have to go. So with that, um, with the help of one of our council members, um, then Councilmember Davis and Andrew Kimmel and Chris Johnson, uh, we put together this workshop worksheet for tonight. And I will um, turn it over to our Public Works Director, Chris Johnson, and um, representatives from Great West, in particular Andrew Kimmel, to start leading us in this workshop.
Alright, thank you, everyone. Chris Johnson, Public Works Director. Um, you've got the uh, one handout that goes over the, a list that uh, Councilmember Davis put together along with Andrew Kimmel. And I also provided to you today, I'm sorry, I didn't get that to you sooner. I went back through the last facility plan, um, that Keller did with us. And I had just some, some of the things about that you saw tonight. And I just wanted to show you that we've been dealing with a lot of this for a little while. Um, there were some ideas, recommendations that they made. And that's why I printed off uh, chapter five, the treatment alternatives, chapter six, the capital group of fine, I was provided in that. Um, the whole document is available online um, on our website. Um, Andrew, where would you like to start tonight?
Right at the beginning. I mean, we kind of walked through the plant. So I think just work your way through. Um, ask questions. We can give some more clarification if you. I, I think the one thing to keep in mind is how does the city want to approach this? Do you want to approach it as piecemeal, as get to it? And when I say that, the issues of the plant or um, you want to just rip the bandage off and go, but keep in mind, you want to spend your money wisely. So um, you don't want to duplicate any efforts and do something today that's something you have to fix in a year or two anyway. So look at it and then we can help answer some of those questions as you go, because there's always more than one way to solve the problem. Um, and I think just look at it for what's going to be in the best interest of the city. Um, short term and long term, because both of those matter. Uh, and then we can help guide that and ask questions, answer whatever it is you guys.
The way we have it laid out in our worksheet, this is dive right in for an N B R system options. And then moving on to kind of the other um, infrastructure upgrades. And then talking, you know, the fiscal and strategic considerations. Um, that is, and then into our next steps. That's how we flowed kind of the worksheet for the workshop, but that open to changing the order if you all feel that you'd like to discuss it in a different order than what we have laid out in our worksheets.
Well, I think Andrew, Andrew just touched on something that we tried to touch on back in June, I believe, this five months ago, which is the need to actually determine what we're trying to do. And many of this membrane issue was brought up in June. It was proposed that they would not be suitable that, how could we investigate from then? Here we are five months later already. So I think maybe we should try a cer- a different approach rather than piecemeal, oh, let's look at membrane, let's look at what have you. What Andrew said is what I would have hoped we would have done back in June, which is decide what we're trying to accomplish, lay that out and then figure out where the pieces fit in that. So yes, I would, I would like to see us pursue something more holistic, which is what I thought was going to be the premise of the workshop.
And I just want to remind that the, the whole entire project right now has been based on getting the membrane facility back to the condition based on our insurance claim. And so with the, with the halt of the membrane, that has allowed us the opportunity to have this more comprehensive discussion. Um, I think then it could serve us to go back a little bit further and look at the Keller and report that Chris has prepared for us that has been available, has been brought up. It's on the website. Um, it's, you know, been a document we've gone over many times. So these two chapters in particular focus, um, I think are, are a great start. Um, the treatment alternatives, maybe first and then capital improvement plan section might be a nice well for that.
Good. Uh, as you've seen tonight, uh, treatment starts at the headworks. And the first thing about the headworks is separating the grit, the large particles and stuff before it gets into the membranes. Um, after seeing the membranes, the condition they're in, we know that um, the screening there has had its challenges to put up politely. And that's where I would begin. We've seen the degradation of the uh, concrete in the channel itself. So to rehabilitate that, to put in a proper liner, that's going to get us another twenty years out of it. Right now, the quote that we have, I think it's guaranteed a, a ten year um, guarantee on that liner. Um, but with proper maintenance, proper uh, just upkeep, uh, we should get much longer than that. Uh, but then it's the decision uh, is what we have there suitable enough for the membranes that we have? Do we need to look at a better screening or um, in this report, it brings up um, a secondary, because right now we only have the primary screening. There is no um, initial or secondary screening or redundant screening process. So if that screen does fail, we have to push everything to look at it until we get it backed up and operational or else it will damage the membranes. Uh,
so I do want to touch, there's more than one way to deal with that. Um, we can deal with some of the headwork screening at the primary lift station. Um, so that is one option. And by doing that, we actually take some of the stress off the pumps that you have. So if you remember, we say we're sending all those solids. That can be like literal mop heads, like full mop heads can get pushed out to the headworks or the treatment building. Uh, we can catch some of that sooner and, and get rid of it sooner. That will help the lift station pumps, so like the force main. So it's, it's tackling the problem a little earlier. Or we could do it all plant. Um, like Chris mentioned, that could be solids removal so that we do some dewatering, put in a press, send it, so we're sending solids out to the landfills, you know, the primary liquids. Um, that could be done with a screen press and keeping your current headworks screen that you have now, that bump and monster. Or it could be a completely different screen. You put in a single screen that doesn't all as one. So there's, there's different ways to do that. You don't have to decide that now. Um, but I think this is one of those big pictures is if you want to tackle a problem, then yes, that headworks channel really needs to be lined. Um, no matter what option you choose, otherwise you're just going to keep pulling the the grit, the cement, the rocks that are falling off. Those will get pushed into the membranes and create other issues. So one way or another, that headworks channel have, I assume, really should be clean so you don't create another damage point. Uh, but then outside of that is, what do you want to do with screening? Do you keep what you have? Do you want to dewater? Um, do you want to just, so you're dealing with solids to a landfill, so the liquids, those are some of those talking points is long term outlook, what do you want? Um, because it does help with operation and maintenance long term also. Um, it's also a lot easier to deal with the landfill when it's all solids, especially during the winter. So there's, there's just benefits that way too, but those all come at a cost and there's lots of different options for how to, how to deal with.
One of the items in the headworks that is made in the Keller report is uh, the flow meter, uh, flow meter that takes from the main lift station that goes first into the plant that measures how much uh, volume has come in. Uh, it's been failed since twenty twenty two. Uh, we do have the new one and we're just uh, waiting to put that in, which we'll probably try to do it this year in the next month or so. Uh, I was just made aware of that today. Um, I know they had received it. I thought it had been put in, but it has not. Um, but that's, again, that's one of the small things that are paid for. Um, how would you like to, any thoughts on headworks?
So if you guys have those, I don't know if y'all have a copy of the alternatives. Uh, the headworks alternatives were, they were covered in the facility plan. That's table five point or five dash two. Um, so if you look, they have like the coarse screen, grit removal, fine screen. You know, one of them is a, your headworks building or modification. Those are, if you get I'd say that's really just blowing things out. You can do a lot before you already have. So I wouldn't necessarily look at this and go, oh, there's a five million dollar project just still there ahead. We've, we can correct what you have for a lot less um, as well. So um, and, and I know we didn't read that report. We've looked at it. I, I think those are, if, if money was not an issue, do anything you wanted, you're basically rebuilding the plants with some of those upgrades, rebuilding it a very nice manner. This, the city doesn't need to go to that. Um, if, especially if you want to get back up in operation. But there are, there are. But there are, there are things that, that should be looked at. One thing I will say with the headwork screen. That. Your plant can operate with the current screen as long as it's operational. It only comes an issue of the stuff. Since this plant was built, one of DEQ's requirements is redundancy in every process flow. The headwork screen is a process flow, you don't actually have redundancy. So at some point, depending on what scale of improvements you make, they may, and very likely make you put in redundancy. A screw press or de-watering is part, you then have two types of screens that you can deal with your waste. But that's, that's why I said, as, as, depending on what you do, they're going to want to see some of those at some point. It's not today, but if you are going to make improvements, the second screen or another type of screen to help that, in case one goes down, the other one can stay in operation. And you're not bypassing the, the MBR completely, is something to consider and look at, and that's where maybe finding. An easier alternative to deal with some of those is, is a better.
So I, I gotta, so what's the budget for this project? What are you guys working off of for these proposals? And I think for DEQ, we can just tell them we're talking, right? And so long as we're talking, we can go on for years.
Yeah, we, we haven't put any costs together, like, we haven't done it.
Okay, but don't we need as a city to have a budget for the project? Don't we have to know the cost of services that we can recoup from user fees before any of this? Is even viable to discuss, we're kind of, I mean, if we want to get to a point, we kind of need to know what money we're speaking about.
So the facility plan is what we would be working on, but that facility plan was done in two thousand twenty-three. It was reviewed and approved by DEQ and accepted by the city at that point. So these. Dollars are in here, but I'm not saying that those have to be the dollars. There's still other options to bring the cost down, or to take the cost up, depending on how you want to do that. But we have to know what direction you want to go, so we can update costs, look at alternatives. If you don't want to touch the headworks, you know, screening, we would completely remove that, but without having the conversation of. Do you want to do it? Do you want to look at redundancy? Do you want to just de-water, no de-watering? I mean, that's a very big field to talk in, and it also takes a lot of time to try to get all of those answers. It, it would be easier if we say. Yes, no, based off just the preliminary numbers from twenty twenty-three, that have inflation and other things already figured into them. So that, that would at least give us some direction of what to bring to you, so you have time to. Yes. We, we kind of have fun, and I don't want to say final numbers, but the narrower, the narrower vision of what you want to do. This is a twenty-year planning document, and. You're, you're, unless you want to tackle twenty years' worth of work all at once, we, we have to pare that down.
No, I'm saying, what can we afford?
We need to look at this as a lens of short term and long term as well. And so right now, the short term has been getting the pla- plant back to operational. Rebuilding it to what it was before, to the specs. Of what it was before it went down, and it aligns with the insurance claim. What you're looking at here. In terms of treatment alternatives, ties into the long term. So for short term, which is why I put in the worksheet, the MBR system options, the short term. We know we need membranes. Worksheet two has other infrastructure upgrade options, which can be tied to some of the longer term issues we're talking about. In terms of budget, the MBR system options. Shelley has provided a document in here that has the current status of the wastewater funds. The short term option would be to use the capital. Improvement funds and the LGGIP savings funds, which are in place for things as the membranes. And capital improvements needed. The, in, some of the infrastructure upgrades that don't fall into the maintenance category or haven't been budgeted. We would be having a more of discussion later about financial options and what that would look like, funding we would need to go after, what the budget would be. So, short term, the goal is to get the plant operational. The next step in getting the plant operational is the membrane, the MBR system options. After that. There are many ways to make our facility more efficient. To up, do upgrades, kind of all those long-term necessary things, which would come with. A financial plan, a budget, and we're working off of a facility plan that was already created. In order to make those decisions. So I go back to, you know, what the goal is here, is short term, getting the plant operational. Long term. Upgrading and/or making changes to the plant to make it more efficient. So how, we could look at how it's budgeted or financially, you know, the short term is budgeted for operating. Using our fees, using our current fiscal year twenty-six budget, and using our. Funds that Shelley has put the documents together for, for the MBR system option. Everything else long term will need other financing options, and will be a larger, robust discussion of how we would pay for those things.
So long and short term are mutually exclusive, there's nothing long term that would influence the short term decisions, is what you're saying.
At this time, the discussion, that, no, I'm not saying that at all, I'm just saying. The next step in the short term is the MBR. The headworks is part of the short term, which has been brought up, it's. The long term can influence the short term, because there are things we could do now, while the plant is not operational. That would make plant more successful once it is operational, i.e. The headworks, you know, the headworks channel that we saw, doing that repair, while there isn't anything flowing through the system. So it's not mutually exclusive.
In June, though, what's changed now?
We didn't know all of this.
I didn't know those were testing. They were reasonable assumptions, and I guess we just keep getting back to, these things matter, the planning matters. Five months, we're now going into winter.
You can't change the past. We have to worry about the future.
You can use it to plan better.
I don't know why we're under the assumption that we didn't have a plan. There has been.
Where is it?
Chris, go ahead, please respond to that.
All right, so in August twenty-three, when I went down there and I brought.
Fine, I understand the narrative, where is the plan? Just print it out for me. That's all I keep asking for. No, 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 these are little checklists, these are little work items with patient dates, they're not part of initiatives, they're not part of. Show me the cost of service analysis that, that is commensurate with these initiatives, fantastic. That's what I keep, that's all I'm asking for. I keep hearing there's a plan. Now we're back to the two, twenty twenty-three, which I remember Chris spoke about and said we're not going to pursue that. Reasonably so, because it's a twenty million dollar price tag. And now, we're. This is the giant document from which you pick and choose initiatives and things you do. I'm saying, what is the plan that we've been following?
Has been to get the plant operational, so we can get. So we meet our, our agreement with ICRIM that we get it back online. At one point, one person was going to do it all by themselves. And so we saw that wasn't the way it was going to work and the way it was going to happen. And this isn't a plan that we could just go in and say, all right, if we fix this, that'll fix it. No, it was a. A piece by piece, step by step, saying, okay, we got this to work, now we can test this, and now we can test this. So our plan of action has been, okay, what is working? What do we need to do to get this next part working? And that's, our plan has been guided on for the last six, eight months. What is working, what can I get working tomorrow? And then what can I get working after that? And that's where we got to the point. Of where we're at, is trial and error of what's broken, what's fixed, where do we need to get additional contractors, engineers, or people? That have the appropriate equipment to clean those basins. Other than that, it's been discussions with me and Andrew, me and the mayor, and me coming to you guys saying, this is where we're at, this is what we're doing. Trying to be transparent of everything we can, but there was never a. Unlike the, like, the water project where we say we want to accomplish this, this, and this, we didn't know all what we had to accomplish. And it's been a month by month changeover, okay, we know this isn't working, we know this needs to be repaired, but we can't test this. Until we get two more things, so I don't know how to tell you. How you would develop a plan, other than. Going in and fixing piece by piece until you get the puzzle put together, and that's where we've come to now, is we've got the puzzle. All except for the border, which is the membranes.
So in June, when we discussed the membranes and the risk to the membranes, because of the lagoon. And the deterioration that should have been expected, knowing that membranes were already fifteen years old. Was it, so it was unreasonable at that point to. To be looking at that a little harder, to, as we're doing now, saying, oh, hey, you know what, it makes sense now. To jump on this and to address these membranes now. The sludge removal that I brought up in June. Oh, no, no, none of that, we spent another ten or fifteen thousand. It's not that these things don't need to happen, it's that these things are brought up, they should be part of plan for evaluation. You told us all October first, not you personally, the, the conversation was, we're all going to be done October first. Then it was November first, and now we're again, many, many months away. And what I keep trying to bring forward is that better planning can, could have had our membranes actually. Done over the summer. Because they were fragile, probably things you knew, maybe, maybe your impetus is. You know, we really need to be as, as frugal as possible, but here we are now, and entering the winter. With a system that if we had identified these things, I think the concrete deterioration, I could have guessed that too, and I don't do this business. It's been a difficult thing, nobody here is responsible for it, but what we're trying to accomplish is fixing it. And here we are, with all the work we've put in, and with the money we're paying Merrick or whichever group this is, Great West. That five months after June, we, I don't know, I think maybe we kind of delivered. On November first, and we didn't.
The reason the membranes were not brought up and discussed at that point is because ICRIM was not going to replace them, so they weren't a priority. We were fixing what was going to be replaced and what needed to be upgraded, they were the very last ones, they're the last piece of the puzzle to get to, so when we pull them out. And now they look like there's basically sheeple stuck to them, we're like, okay. What are we going to do to clean this? And there was, there was no way to get them to a level that we felt. It was worth the time that we already put in, but we were under the impression that we were able to clean them to a point to at least bring it online, and we could phase in new membranes over the next. Several months or several years, because we did replace one of the cassettes in twenty twenty-one. So we knew one of them was that, should have been in fairly decent shape, but they're not, because the screening is bad, and there's more to it than we got, but it was, that was the last piece of the puzzle we got to.
And that's what I'm saying, I said that, not knowing anything in June, it sounds like maybe you knew that too, and I guess all I'm trying to bring to bear is, five months later. We could have been done, you've put in the effort, you have the expertise, you've heard the expertise, so what can we do differently this way?
I think everyone at this table laments that we're not restarting this plant on November one. I think we all wanted to see it restarted on November one, but that's not where we are tonight. Tonight, as I see it, we have two things, two action items, that can maybe help the plant get started sooner. I mean, we, we can talk about watering systems and, and RI basins and, and all those things, but. Those, if we deal with them tonight, we're not going to start the plant sooner, as I understand the situation. I think our goal, at least my goal, is to restart this plant as soon as possible, so I, I.
Based on what and when?
I, I. Don't like to see the fact that this might restart in, in next summer. That's a great disappointment to me. You know, when I started in January, I said, my one goal was to get this plant operational. And we're not there, so we all regret that. But I think tonight, we need to focus on just the two items, the other things we can talk about, maybe next time, or we need to save one to get. Explore that a little bit further, but the two things are that this headworks channel repair. And then the membrane system, and I think if we dealt with those two things tonight, then that pushes the peanut down. A little bit further, pushes the ball down the court, so to speak, and that's what we want to accomplish. If we accomplish that, we can go home satisfied, that we've done something, and. And therefore, with that in mind, I, I appreciate the question about money, you know, it all starts with that, what kind of money do we have? And as I review that, these wastewater funds that has been put together for us, we have reserves of about eight hundred and sixty-five thousand. And then we have some budget items for this year that maybe we could tap into as well. Which means to me, that we maybe need some advice on the best way to spend that money, but there is money to be spent. On a membrane system, and there is money to be spent on this headworks channel repair. And. So, given that, there's money, there is money available for these two projects, we need to talk about those details. And maybe I will even start that conversation by saying, I think that these two could be considered together. We don't want a delay that headworks repair, while that plant is down, and that headwork can be done, that should be done now, while we can do that. And I, the quote, a little bit of concern about one quote being quite a bit higher than the other quote, but. We're talking forty thousand, and now's the time to do that, and I would support a resolution to have that repair work done. The membrane, you know, I appreciate a little bit more conversation about that. You know, you know, talking about a hundred thousand dollars differences, I look at it between sort of the new technology and the existing technology. The one thing that's a problem with the new technology is it's not yet technology, right? And they're working on that. And that's one of the reasons for the delay until next summer for getting this operational, is that that isn't quite available, whereas the others could be shipped.
It's readily available, the issue is, is. The new plants that are coming, coming online, those are in front of what would be your order. The old technology, they're. They're, they're made in different locations, it's not that the technology is proven, the new ones have been using for years, there's just a. Larger backlog for those, because people are making the switch, so there's a higher.
It's delivery time.
It's delivery time. It's not that they're still working on the technology and trying to figure out, they've been using it for years.
If we did that, if we switched over, we could also do the work that would need to be done on the plant itself. To accept the new cartridges and change up, and, you know, do the work that needs to be done in the, in the bays. To accept the new membranes.
I mean, yeah, there's, there's still plan, those basins inside still have to be cleaned, there's still sludge down in there, we're talking with Bryson. Last week, so kind of. Gone in there, I mean, literally, you're not going to get a truck in there, a vector truck, like they did in the outside aeration basins, it's going to be a little more labor intensive. But they can get cleaned, the piping that needs to be rerouted, that work can begin, it can't be finalized till there. New brackets are made, you know, stuff's in place, you have to kind of fit it in there. But you can get everything prepared, ready, yes, if you made the decision to go to the newer technology. If you stick with the ones you have now, it's quite literally, you pull the sets out, or the. Yeah, I mean, you pull it set up, replace cartridges, and just work through them, go. So it would be faster as far as the install goes, and be faster getting.
But then.
So what's, I mean, as I understood the timing, maybe January one, the plant would be operational, it'd be usually older, stop the existing style.
So they were saying shipping in January, that was about a month ago, and they sent us. So now you're probably looking at February to get them here, and then we're still the startup process with that, so.
With the new one?
New one, they were saying, what was it, four or five months?
From my perspective. If we look at. Changing out the current model, and staying with what we currently have. In eight to ten years, when those need to be replaced, we're going to be right back here, or we'll have to take the plant offline. We have to go back in, clean everything, we have to put down, instead of going into a cycle of, say, year eight, we replace. One cartridge, year ten, we replace another, and year twelve, we place the third. We're going to replace in all three again, so we can already say that's another six hundred thousand dollars, the plant's going to be down for six months to make all that happen. Right now, we have that, unfortunately, we have that time. We pay it now, and then at year eight, ten, we're paying a hundred thousand dollars to start cleaning them out, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to clean them out. And we could do it every two years, instead of every year, spread out our asset management, if we properly maintain them.
Chris, you, you were just saying, you advocate for the newer model.
Yes.
And I, just so you're clear, I would as well, I mean, I haven't looked at all the numbers, but so you're clear on where I stand on that. That would where it would be, but in the absence of, of all the other information and, and a formal understanding of the cost and things like that.
Can I ask, you just made a statement that you haven't looked at all the numbers. If you're asking for data and you're asking for plans and you're being provided with these numbers.
No, I haven't seen the numbers.
Yes, you have. They're in the memo from last council meeting.
You know what, you can't dictate what numbers I believe are relevant.
Okay, but I just wanted clarification.
How much are the, how much is the sludge, give me the page again for the, for the additional replacement and the sludge that they don't know about and. And all the things that are not part of the plan.
Okay, I just, I wanted to clarify, because you said you haven't looked at the numbers, the numbers were provided, so I wanted.
I haven't been able to see all the numbers I would like to see, let me clarify that.
But you, the numbers you have seen with a comparison of the price between the.
I'm aware of the difference of the price and the options, I don't actually have a hundred percent confidence in where. The budget money is coming from, so those are also the numbers that need to be evaluated. I have concerns about cost of service, that you're going to, that not you personally, that this is going to be foisted on the residents in some nefarious way. And and at this point, I believe it is essential. That residents who have been paying for something already that's dysfunctional, that we not tamper with those costs. And then it kind of pays plays right into. New transaction fees, that is, people have new higher costs of utilities, they're going to be paying higher transaction fees, because something else. On this memo is about creating higher transaction fees for the residents, so.
So I think what that could convert into questions, uh. Looking at the numbers, I agree with the new membranes because of capacity. What effect will this have on residents' fees? Will we be increasing fees based on the numbers here, these are all questions we can have. Come forward and have discussions about tonight versus.
They're supposed to be in the plan that I told you, and I'm going to look through here.
Yes, so I just, I just wanted to make sure that you saw the numbers that were provided. And you understood the difference in pricing between the two percent, it sounds like you are in favor of the new technology. I've heard Tom say he's in favor of the new technology.
So am I.
I would bring that, okay, new technology over here with Sean.
That would be my preference, I'm not in favor of it.
Okay, I apologize for misspeaking on your behalf.
I would like to see it's advanced things within a, a reasonable. And I would also like to see per all this discussion of numbers, that the council make a firm commitment. To a number that's placed on, on this with all this discussion telling me that all the numbers are accounted.
So do not exceed number is what I'm saying for each of these uh, project choices.
No, for the whole thing, this is a, a whole project that we're supposed to be working on, so that, yeah, for each milestone, absolutely, the milestones.
Tammy, would you like to weigh in on the MBR options or, yes, you're weighing on the MBR options.
I am, I am for the. For a multitude of reasons, obviously, it, it brings us into the future, it isn't just about. The old ones being phased out, it, it provides a better level of service for the, our total operation of the plant. It'll cut down on operational costs also. As far as MBRs are expensive on top end, on the front end, on operation. And so it'll help with improved operational costs and reliability. And and so I think it's, it's really, we're being progressive and thinking about. The future so that we don't have to, we're going to have to worry about other things with the operation of the plant, always, 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 there's, I mean, there's. This is not a set it and forget it, this is something that's a continued thing that we have to keep top of mind for us. And so if there's one thing that we know we will not have to bring back to the table in the. Midterms of operation, then it makes sense for the city of Bellevue, its existing citizens. And those lovely citizens that bind themselves moving into the city of Bellevue and the beach. I do, I do, I do think it's important, um. Upon making this decision, that, and I don't think we can disseminate that this tonight. The actual projected cost per, like I use the fee costs. I, I don't think it's reasonable to, to even have any discussion over. Fee costs this evening, because we don't have all the information to do that, and I, I would not like to have that conversation.
Jessica, I have on the MBR system options.
Um, I'm talking about headworks, um, that's the page I'm on and most, most ready.
Great, I'm going to check in with Jessica on the MBR system conversation, if there's anything you'd like to add in terms of the two options.
I'm for a TV, so, um, we can use MBR and. Uh, I, I agree with that, I, I have to agree with that, we've been wasting money. Forever and that really needs to stop and we're just going to need to bite the bullet and fix what needs to be fixed.
Are there follow up questions on the MBR, um? Across the system, things you want to talk about with Andrew or Chris about that, or do you feel ready to?
I think we should talk about the headwater channel.
Well, can just go quickly, I'm sorry, but it is about this, are there any additional maintenance costs associated? Um, with either of the technologies, are there, is there?
Did you reduce maintenance costs with the upgrades, because one, um, we go from the three uh, aeration system down to a two. Which agrees with our efficiencies, we're not using just blowing more air out there, which requires less maintenance and more, um. Annual upkeep on the blowers and the different motors that are pushing through that, so overall, it's more efficient, less maintenance, um. And the clinging is supposed to be a little simpler at the backwash and the way they can do it now, um, it, it cleans at a higher. Uh, level than the current membrane and the backwash system is used.
Um, thank you, and I would suggest that that's something that's important to put in the budget and the milestones for these things, so. Because it helps evaluate and factor in accruals and things like that, so. Okay, you've got that. Where?
It's improved operational.
No, no, I mean, I'm not wonderful, I'm saying in a, in a document, a financial document, so that it can prove and balance things out, so yes, yeah, wonderful, thank you. Sorry, Sean.
I said, that's a, talk about the head water channel repair, get it done, it's got its first thing left to do, it can be done now. It's not what.
I have a question. Um, I have a question, um, about capacity, what does any of this? Does it improve? Increase our capacity?
The answer is it can, but it doesn't have to, and then where I'm going with that is. Um, if you put in the same number of MBR cassettes, so you have blanks in there now. So, um, the report that we provided at the last meeting is, it gave the exact number, like you have this many cassettes. And you can grow out to this many in the cells that are in there, so that's the hanging rods. Right now, they look like they're full, but they're just blank, there's nothing in them, there's none of the actual fibers and filaments. So, yes, if you wanted to increase the capacity, you can absolutely do that, you could buy more membranes, but that's. Going to just drive the cost up. What we, what we got quotes for were the same number of cassettes going in that you have today. Now, by going from the old technology to the new technology, you do gain about ten percent additional efficiency in them. Um, by, by going to where you're at, they said at full buildout, you gain about thirty percent. But you're not at a full buildout situation, so that's why they're saying ten to fifteen, as far as added capacity for how the membranes can treat and what they can handle. Uh, just by replacing the cassettes you already have and leaving the blanks in. But if you wanted to remove all those blanks and do a full buildout, it's going to be more than the number that's in there. Um, that's something that once all the brackets are in, you can start phasing those in as you need them as well. So put them on some of that rotation plan as, as you need.
Conservative, conservatively, that full buildout, how many more?
I would have to, I'd have to dive into what that full number is, I, I couldn't give you an exact number. Um, your INI is contributing to that, so stuff, incineration collection system.
And how many more dump stations to get, there's those residents versus.
Yeah, all sorts of things that can impact it.
So from the report that was given by Viola, um. If we use the stainless steel footers that we use in right now with new membranes, we're seeing moderate. Small increase of ten, fifteen percent, so we're looking at if we're, if we have thirteen hundred EDUs from what the last color report, roughly the number. Um, ten percent would be another hundred and thirty, um, so I would say between a hundred and thirty and two hundred more EDUs. Uh, just by going with the new, without expanding, just by upgrading. But there's also other things that come into play with that. We do have the choke points that we've talked about before in the collection system, we do have some issues with our collection system that limit how much we can grow there. So just because the plant can take on more capacity doesn't mean the entire system can at one time. Uh, but like Andrew was just saying, once we do the full loadout, and that can be another two, five years down the road, um, as we. Get back some of our, um, savings and when we start planning for it or we find other grants to do the upgrades. Um, we could be looking at thirty percent, uh, or maybe even more if we get some of the, um, other issues resolved. So we could be looking at easily going from thirteen hundred to, um, two thousand EDUs available in the next five years.
I think the original plant, I apologize, from Keller, when we talked about like the. What the MBR system could handle, I, I was pretty sure that number was twenty five hundred EDUs.
Again, I don't have the exact numbers. Some of the things aren't, weren't, so you got your as built and your design, some of the things that were designed weren't built as they should have been, so like. The legumes are smaller than they, than they were designed to be, so that reduces some things here and there, so we do have challenges. Uh, we're, we're probably never going to hit that full design loadout, even if everything was brand new and perfect, unless we went in. And built it as it was designed, we're still dealing with some other challenges.
Oh, for sure. Would you see an, uh, a reduction if, let's say, over the, over the next decade? Twenty five percent or twenty percent of our residential started using, got approved, I know it's not gray water systems. Would that have a meaningful impact on what gets pushed forward, have you seen that, I was just curious, as.
And anytime you reduce the amount of water that you have to treat will help, um, but. Say you get rid of all your gray water, now you have a very strong wastewater stream, um, so. The reality is, is that plant was designed around a very specific BOD load, like a wrench. What is typical residential, the city of your size of restaurants, et cetera. Um, if you remove your gray water, say you remove fifty percent of it, um, that is water that dilutes that waste stream. That your plant was anticipating of seeing, so. Instead of having a BOD loading, I'm getting a little weird here, nerdy, you know, two hundred milligrams per liter, you know, of strength, or two to two hundred eighty. Which is typical residential, you could hit five hundred, that's not normal strength, because you got rid of all that water. Now, what your plant sees, it's not designed to handle that strong waste. That's what happens when someone comes in like, I want to open a butcher shop or a kill shop and slaughter pigs and send blood back. You know, that type of impact that destroys plants, you could unintentionally have that same impact if you didn't plan for it. So that's, that's where some of that concern is, is that plant was not designed around that type of waste stream coming in. It could likely be modified, um, if it was planned for, but it, I could tell you it's, they can't handle that stream as it is.
So what are the ramifications through the zero escape extravagant, right, go, not extravagant, excuse me, um, advocate? But how does that, as we move towards more, um, water reduction usage and. And low flow appliances and things like that, do, is that something we also have to be looking at in these decisions or it's not?
We still have seasonal runoff and what we're going to be seeing more with, um, these larger. Larger driveways, zero escaping, uh, larger homes with more cruise service, we're losing our permeable space, our, our permeable ground. For water to get back into the aquifer and has to go somewhere and it's going to go right down all these roads, and so we're going to have to start looking at. Uh, potential of a, a need of a stormwater system, and if we go to a stormwater system, we need to be able to treat that stormwater, so it's a. There's always, I mean, no matter what type of best practice you're looking at, there's always a different take, you know, you may gain this, this and this from going to zero escape. But this could be a challenge, or, you know, by having a five car, half your property paid. You know, you have these challenges and then it's causing all that water to go from this place down to your neighbor's place, and so has all these other effects that. You may think you're not hurting anything, but now the three houses down below you are getting washed out every drop, so. It needs to be smart planning and that's why we do a comprehensive plan and they all will work together, um, but as I'm saying again. This plant had a specific design threshold, we have specific, um. Nutrient loads that we have to hit when we do our land application on our i, and so we can only put so much phosphor, so much nitrate back into the ground, so much ammonia. Um, so we need to stay within a limit and spring runoff helps keep those numbers in balance with the INI, because that's taken in, so. And we're never going to get a hundred percent collection or a hundred percent of the leaks in, in anything there. But if we go to gray water, we're going to have to make adjustments, but that's why we do ten year plans, five year plans, if we have to make that adjustment in ten years. We'll start planning for it, um.
And, and with the headworks that Sean was just mentioning and the extraordinary, um. Destruction to the concrete came from something, right, the septic nature of all of that is this part, is there a plan as well? To try and do with that, or is that just the nature of the system that it's going to eat through anything you, you put forth?
So, part of what you guys were contending with, it was the length of your force main.
Um, the length of the what?
The pipe, the pipe from the lift station, just up the side of town and by the edge of town, has to pump from that point all the way up to the treatment plant. Um, every time that pump turns on, it doesn't magically empty out that whole pipe, so. Realistically, it takes more than one day for that, when that first gallon gets lifted up and out to the plant. It's sitting in that pipe for a day before it makes it to the end, um. And because of that, there's not a lot of oxygen being generated, um, there does get pockets of air, although pockets of air happen. Um, that allows the biology, the bugs that are actually in the waste to get really excited. Um, and some aspects, I mean, when you hear the term septic, think of a septic tank, there's a lot of solids that accumulate. Um, that waste stream is becoming so, so potent, that when it hits that plant, there's significant odor. Um, but the degradation is not just the septic nature, some of it is a gas, this breaking it down, some of it is. Um, bacteria, so biology, it's a bug, it's actually eating away at the concrete, um. What, last six, eight months, we've been injecting the chemical into the lift station, it adds oxygen to it. That is helping to reduce some of that odor and some of that septic nature, because we're, we're changing the, the chemistry of the waste you're in to help that. Uh, but it's, it's not a perfect fit, but it's used in a lot of different cities when they have very, very long force mains like that, and it does make a big difference. Um, we're just trying to correct the damage that's done.
Those totes cost about four thousand, um, each tote, just under four hundred gallons. Um, right now, I have a set about one ton is, is our flow rate, we're trying to get a team in here that's going to put an oxygen generator where it just. Basically an air compressor that presses oxygen and can put direct oxygen in there, um, that whole system would run us about five grand. And it would continue to produce oxygen, we can get rid of the totes, or we can use a combination where. Let's, we can get back down to using, you know, less of that chemical source, not wasting money just down the toilet, basically. So we are looking at options to improve that, um, force main, um, the potential also is. And a future upgrade to go from basically a gravity fed to, um, just a higher bit, uh, um. Was it low pressure, um, force main, so be it around, you know, eight, ten PSI, it would increase that transportation. Uh, speed, so it just wouldn't be lingering and building and festering for five miles.
And maybe different material for the line.
Yeah, yeah.
So do you also think, is it, I mean, is it unreasonable to say, I don't know how long this headworks worked, but, and let's say it's fifty thousand, I know we've seen different bids or what have you. Fifty thousand is that in some ways a, a fixed cost where we say, you know, every five years, we got to spend fifty thousand dollars to replace the headworks. Just because of this situation until it were to change, it doesn't seem unreasonable.
So the lining system that, um, we're using, it's essentially inert, um. Concrete is porous, the, the system that is being sprayed on, it's like a three layer system. It, it doesn't degrade like that, so what can happen over time is it can eventually start to fall off the walls. So they might have to rip it off and reapply, um, but the manufacturer gives a ten year warranty on it staying in place. So if this starts breaking down before that, they will kind of. So that is, that's one of the nice things, by going to that, it's, it's not like concrete, no one gives a ten year guarantee on concrete, no matter where you live, it's. You know, by next year, what's it gonna look like? And that's why we try to get away from the concrete channel.
Um and then again, as we talked about that uh that screen in there, um fifteen years old. What happens when we have to replace that screen? Do we have to change the channel? So maybe we can get another ten years out of that um screen. But when we do that, then we go back and rebuild the whole headworks again, and that could be a hundred fifty, five hundred thousand dollar project, but. But then we have another, we've saved our money again and we are managing our assets, so.
Great. Thanks.
So we do the order list.
Oh, Diane wanted to speak, did you want to speak to the headwork as well?
I did.
We're we're moving into the headworks channel discussion.
All right, um I just wanna say after reading um the the memo from Great West. Um. They're the experts on this. And this headworks channel on, it's their page eighteen of their memo. Anyway. It says Great West recommends moving forward with the estimated cost to repair the headworks channel and. I I think we would even miss if we, what he gets, what our engineers recommend. So I'm I'm all in on repairing that headworks channel and it looks like of the three bids. After doing some more research, it it's apparent that the cheapest bid is also the best ones that.
And somebody that's already been doing work for the city in the past, they did work on your lift stations. Um I mean, they're, they've been around a long time. Like I said, their their processes are a little different than the other ones. Um it's actually almost twice as thick as any of the other manufacturers that we talked to. So there's just a. There's a little more durability with what they're using, um but it's a different product. It works very well. We use it all the time. We've used it in a lot of other cities. Um and like I said, their standard warranty is ten years. Some of the other ones, their extended warranty is ten years. So it's just, it's a different makeup, a different comfort level with them. Um we did reach out, first reached out to them after we received the bids and wanted some clarification, like, hey, there are some pockets in here, some gaps, you're gonna fill those. And they did say their their intention is to fill them with their high-density foam that they use as the first layer. So you're gonna fill those pockets to reshape them. So that that was already their intention and they're aware of it. Um but it's not a common.
Okay. While we're on, if you if the council welcomes this. We're at some of these infrastructure upgrades. We've got de-watering system installation, RA basin rehabilitation, lagoon dredging and lining. For the sake of efficiency, I mean, we haven't looked at the cost analysis of all these three things yet. But knowing um or potentially knowing if we're gonna go for an MBR system that has delays in terms of shipping. Or and if we decide headworks makes sense to do now, um. I'd like to look at if the council's up to these other things of how they could. Be efficiently done as we're waiting on the MBRs uh to meet compliance, to be efficient. Um and if there's funding we need to look at for that or. Ways in which we wanna look at these other infrastructure upgrades and how they could tie into. The current system and the processes we're waiting for the MBR, the membranes.
So when we, when we work and I just told Tammy, thank you, you you gave a really good start to this. Um. The. The upgrades are the things that we brought up in here are items. Some of them are items that DEQ has brought. Um the RA basins is one of those. The irrigation system is one of those. Um the lagoon, that's actually part of this. Those have never been approved by DEQ. The seepage testing was never completed. Um so those are all things that have been put on hold. And so we wanted them in there, not because we say we have to go do this project, it's. Do you want to, do you want to try to get on the radar with the funding agency? Do you want to try to get help so it's not all coming out of city reserves? Yes, city still pays for it. Um every one of the, at least topics, discussion points would be an improvement. Something that is better operationally, make your system treat better. Make it better for the environment, whether whether that's removing some of those solids, which makes your plant work a little less. Fixing those RA basins so they do their job, this is not infiltrating correctly. Uh the lagoons, making sure we do water those and last longer or. Dredge them and and make sure that they're not leaking because we still don't know that. No one does yet. Um so it was just, let's have a talking point. So if you look at this, we know we have some immediate fixes. Um the other topics or those other items are the. What can the plant look like in ten years from now? Whether you do it in two years, five years, ten, fifteen? It's up to you, but these are the things that from an oper- operational standpoint will improve the life of the system as a whole. That's the that's part of it is, at some point that plant is going to need more help. We just wanted to bring your attention of. There are opportunities, there's opportunities every year for funding to to go after that, to try to get help. Um if if you wanna wait, you can, but we just wanna throw out, there's there's themes. And if you want to, we can get costs for those. Uh we just wanted to show you. It's really hard to explain what's going on out there if you've never seen it. Um for some of the works and it's like, yeah, this isn't working, that isn't working. But if you if you haven't seen it, it's really hard to explain the level. Uh I will say to get the plant operational and running, it is the bare minimum membranes. From there, everything helps the membranes function better. You know, after the membranes and the irrigation system, the lagoons. And the RA bases. We need to correct the RA bases. DEQ's already said that. So that's on a shorter window. That's not a ten-year project. That's, they wanna plan by February of what is your plan of attack with those. Um they're not saying they have to be corrected by February. They say, we know that's gonna take time and money. We need to know that you are. You know, as I said, moving the ball down the field. And so that's why we need to bring your attention because DEQ sent a letter. You know, last week, they present saying, please put your time.
I think that the, those things are obviously. Important and worthy of discussing and and I would like to look at some cost comparisons. On both what it costs to do the upgrades and then and how. Hopefully we'll be able to affect the operation of the the plant. So that we can make better decisions. I just don't see that happening tonight for obvious reasons, but I. I do fully support that because it is, this is an ongoing thing. Again, and this is what's gonna bring us back into operations to the best level of operation. And and then to the point that's been continued continually made, we can plan for this. So then it's kind of. Laid out, here's what this looks like. Here's the RA basin rehabilitation right now and we need to negotiate with Dan Brown. And but these are some of the things that need to happen and here's some of the cost impacts for it. And then the lagoon dredging, once the plant gets online, that we can start pulling the goons off and. So then we can have a plan in place to help accomplish these things, so I suppose. Yeah, I didn't think that tonight this was like, uh as far as the workshop, it wasn't a one thing, one and done. This was not one and done. This is.
No.
Getting the conversation going. That's why I don't sleep at night. For anybody who doesn't know me, Jessica. Knew this, I I come up with my best ideas at two o'clock. So.
Call me.
And then four, and then four.
So what I'm hearing from Tammy and please try and if other council agrees is directing um to get a little bit more analysis. Cost analysis on BC or yeah, basically BC and D. The de-watering system installation, RA basin rehabilitation and lagoon dredging and lining. Understanding of cost and um you know, how that will benefit. Our facility and timing on those things.
Yeah, mayor. I uh I believe that this uh if. There's a lot to unpack here and and a lot of this material came in this morning. And I would like to make sure that we dedicate the appropriate amount of time and get the information that we need to have. Uh uh be able to make better decisions. Um I'm I'm not quite. Ready on BC and D tonight.
Absolutely, yeah.
To move those forward without having more more time to really digest it.
I think that was the intention too, was to just make make you aware of these, but not ask you to make decisions on those tonight. So. Maybe that do that.
What would be helpful for me, just long-term, and it's been brought brought up, but. The, you know, looking at like a five-year plan, like saying this is our five-year plan and this is our ten-year plan. How much is gonna cost so we can figure out, okay, this is the allocation. Of percentage of our budget each year, so we can look at that and. Plan for that and then we can then to Sudan's point, assign per. What things have been done and then go back to our constituents and saying this is how the money's gonna apply.
And I think that, I think there is a general consensus between all council members and myself and even staff, that that is where we're. Where we would like to be and that's where we're liking to, we would like to go. And at this time, we have been. The the short-term goal is then getting the plant operational with the intention of getting to exactly, you know, what what you're speaking to. Um and I think that that's why tonight they're kind of the top things. For decision-making were the MBR system options and then the headworks because it. It seemed the most, uh it was what was brought up at the last council meeting. And you wanted to take a pause on it to make sure that it was a little bit more comprehensive with the membrane work to be done. So. Thank you for that feedback.
And we, yes, in deciding about the headwork in the um. The new membrane system, can we cannot be the first thing in our timeline. And showcasing uh all of this work that's being done so we can understand the bigger picture. I mean, going down there tonight was so helpful and just me, all the work that. Chris and his team and everybody who's been doing was like that, was a lot of work. Well, a lot of work. We have so much more to do.
Uh they they've been doing a great job down there and then, you know, a lot of the stuff like next week I'm going to a demonstration down in Haber. Where a team's bringing in a dewar and they've got all this stuff and they say they have all this money. Yeah, I put into our twenty million dollar grant with them and it's a two percent match. So twenty million dollars. And uh we put in two hundred thousand dollars, it'd be a great one, or two uh two million dollars, whatever. Um you know, I think a lot of their stuff might be hoping and I don't know where they're coming up with this money because other people can't find it. But we're seeing what else is out there so we can actually see what equipment is available, the resources, who's using what. And we can provide better process and better planning in the future. But right now, um like the mayor said a couple times. Andrew said it, just trying to get this plant up and working, uh help reduce some of the challenges down with the odor. Let's get us moving forward. Um and that's what it's been a piece at a time moving us forward and there are delays, I mean. All I think, full responsibility for the ones I can be responsible for, but sometimes uh we've had plenty of our own um. Shipping and parts and whatever else, but uh I think we've been doing a great job down there. Appreciate Andrew's. Um help, uh assistance and then your guys' support over the last nine months, ten months.
A question to you in terms of uh creating plan documents. We have our facility plan from twenty twenty-three from Keller. Would the next steps be in terms of these particular work items? To pull from the Keller plan or, you know, I just wanna make sure because in essence, we're talking about authorizing. Great West to go out and do some work. So we wanna be conscious of what we're spending, you know. What we're asking to spend money, you know, what we're spending money on for Great West's time.
From a planning level, which this, that's really what this is. If it's already in that facility plan, um you should use it. Don't, don't recreate the wheel, don't spend all the hours re redoing something that was done, you know, two years ago. Um whether the numbers are completely accurate, they're still going to be in the realm of reality. Um you know, the cost estimate that's in there, and I was just looking at that like for the headworks street. Um you know, if they say it's uh grit removals three hundred and fifty thousand, it. That's from one manufacturer, it could be three hundred, it could be forty. But in the grand scheme of things, it's a ballpark, give you a feel for what it would cost. Don't recreate changing all the screens out, say, this is finding level, still accurate enough with contingency that. This at least gives us a feeling of what we're up against. And from there. When you decide to do it, you dial in a little tighter, a little tighter, a little tighter. But for now, that's enough, don't recreate with. They didn't really go over redoing the RA basis. We would have to look at that.
And that one, DEQ's gonna want a full engineering on it and and a whole new design plan on it because it'll be enough of a change. I, if I were to go to any of our lift stations and I bought the same pump to replace the same pump, they wouldn't care. But if I do an upgrade on it. I need to have him do an evaluation on it, say this is gonna work and this is how it's gonna improve our system. That's what this RA basin is going to do. It's going to improve the system and it's gonna change the current flows. So we're gonna have to do new um sample testing. Um engineering on it.
I I would like to say, I don't think we have to go and do the entire figure it all out to the very last moment. That's not what I'm proposing. What I would like to have presented or to know is you believe or you're right that. If you replace the headworks and you and we replace these membranes, that those are the final steps. To making the plant operational in a meaningful way. And it's been made operational in a foundational way so that everything else that happens. Is building off of what has been done. So and then you've also mentioned with these improved membranes or with these improvements, that there may be cost savings in the, for the next year. With in terms of maintenance or what have you. So all I would recommend is that we, that you. That you commit and that, obviously there are things that come up, but that you establish that these two things get us to a particular point. That based ba- based on the best information possible, as you've said, five months, six months. Pad a month, it's very common in software development, pad the months, right? And you say, we're gonna be online again in June, that you honestly assess that the winter sucks. And that maybe it's gonna freeze everything and you can't get it done or whatever, but that you put that in there as well. And you say, we believe for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. On June first, we're gonna turn the sucker on and that there aren't gonna be any surprises. We don't know, we've added another hundred thousand. If we can get to that foundationally, then the next thing, when you're, when you finish doing this or doing during the downtimes, you say. We believe the next thing is this. Here's Miles with all two. That's, that's all I'm asking that we see and then. And that we're able, I mean, I can't, it's not à la carte, right? I'm not gonna, or I won't, I know maybe everyone else will, but I'm not gonna vote yes on the headworks. Channel repair as an à la carte item. But if you can put it associated with a milestone that tells us, yes, on. We believe June first, based on these things, based on everything else that's been done, this work will be done and we're gonna turn this on. And it's gonna cost this much and it does not increase user cost or things like that, then I can vote yes. But as à la carte, I cannot.
Tom?
The, I I appreciate that. I I think that that's kind of a, maybe similar to where I'm looking at. Right now, I'm thinking about. Six months, which is getting a fun operational, roughly. Uh and plant and and I think we know what's involved with that, the two items. Um in the next steps that was spelled out in kind of this plan, it talked about obtaining updated cost estimates from the viola. Um which I guess we don't have, so we need those. Um and and then there's the other items there. It seems like that's. Some portion of the next steps and assignments that needs to be done before we can say yes and approve a resolution for this. It seems to me that, now I don't know if that was how it was anticipated, but um. Or with the numbers that we have on the screen. Are those adequate for us to really say, yeah, it's okay to go ahead? Seems like maybe they aren't if, this that's inconsistent with the next steps in the assignments. Um and then maybe planning out for two years. You know, if this, if we've gotten a letter from DEQ that says in February. This needs an RA basin rehabilitation, um you know, we better start working on that. Uh and so I don't, I don't really think that, you know, this plan should be updated for the next five years or the next ten years. Uh immediately, but we probably should know it, that what this is what's necessary in six months. I think we have a pretty good idea for that. And then maybe beyond that, it's two years. You say, yeah, these are the things that you should do within the next two years. And as we're working on those, we'll start thinking about five years. Um and then we, and as part of that, we think about what do we have money for? If we have to buy land from Dan Brown, for example, well, where's the money? Well, where's the money coming from? You know, all that is just part of a, is part of a. Maybe a two year plan, but I don't think we should get too carried away with additional things. Um, and I also agree that this plan should be used as a foundation rather than redoing it. There's, you know, a lot of work there. I think. Probably the city was shocked when they saw the price tag and maybe it got put on a shelf and then the plant failed and. Here we are, but uh, there are things there that probably could be.
I think in the next steps and assignments, just to speak to that, I think there was a question mark when this was being put together. If the uh, estimates that we received from Viola had. Would expire by the time we were having this workshop discussion and because estimates can expire. So, I think. In reviewing that, Chris, were you able to determine if those are still viable, if we need to get updated numbers from that?
Uh, the gentleman that provided us the quotes was unavailable. He uh, wouldn't be able to get them to me until next week at the soonest. Um, he was on vacation or on a business trip where he did not have time to put everything in for the new side. Um, so we're based off of. A memo that he included in um, the email with the full layout on and we didn't, I didn't put the uh. I didn't put the full cost proposal in from the the current style because it's an engineering document that was fifty something pages that. I'm not sure that we would have been here all night trying to explain it to you, but he's saying that was a twenty percent, ten percent. But there was a number in there. He was supposed to get it to me by um, next week, so.
Chris, do we have, this sounds like something we have to update.
What's that?
This sounds like something.
We don't. So it's proprietary, proprietary, there we go. Uh, they're the only ones that that manufacture it and they're the only ones that sell it. So there's nowhere else we can get it from. There won't be a competitive bid for it.
And then on the number that I put in uh, for the workshop tonight. I did add like fifty thousand dollars to that for some of the piping. Now, that's not a quote, that's a, we know we have to redo some piping in there. Um, when I spoke with Bryson, said, yeah, I'll have, you know, his labor, his guys could help with it. Um, this is gonna be fusing, but that was my assumption when I talked to him.
But we also have changes from that too. So we're also gonna have to find additional um, staffing. Uh, we're not gonna have BD after uh, December twenty ninth, December thirtieth, either, end of the year. So. If we're, if we're being fully transparent and you're wanting a six to seven month thing, I'm gonna say, oh, I'm gonna ask for seven months now because I have to find a whole new crew that's gonna help me install it.
Good for you and you should and you should be supported in what you need and the money that you need. I mean, why can't we participate in the challenge of finding it a little more accurately than this piecemeal thing? So. I would welcome knowing every little thing you think needs to be in there so that we can figure out a proper funding solution.
There's all that stuff in this nice big stack of plans?
No, no.
Um, and so one of the things we'll ask you for is like, what are those modifications? So we start looking at parts, pieces. Um, you know, they said it's relatively simple, but you know, a standard crew can go and do it. They weren't saying it has to be specialized. It's like people who work around pipe.
It basically sounds like they're gonna have everything prefab, they know the design of our of our plant, they understand exactly what was put in. And they have everything pre-cut, prefab, and it's plenty of play. Um, so it shouldn't be that difficult. But again, um. It's having enough people to do it and that's one thing that I I will say that we have struggled with. We've been trying to. Y'all can create, trying to keep the cost down, which is drag, drag out the timeline.
So with that, um. Sounds like there's a preference for the MBR system. We will get final numbers from Viola as this um, next step in action. I would love to take a moment and um, talk about the financial side of things. As I wanna make sure that. We're headed in the right direction of considering the funds to be used. Um, you know, for for these purchase, for this purchase. Um, and then we also have Christina in the audience to have a larger discussion, um, funding discussion for. Uh, going after funding for other elements of the project. If we'd like to. Have that discussion at all, but I turn your attention to the wastewater funds page. It's page twenty two in this section. Um, shall we put this together? In discussing this with Chris, um. Looking at utilizing the reserves for the membrane portion. And then the headworks would be coming out of repairs and maintenance. For the fiscal year twenty six budget. Like, do you have any questions for Shelley? Question on that?
What's the purpose of the sixteen ninety four savings account? As opposed to the capital account?
The cap funds go directly to the capital account, the sixteen ninety four is general savings.
And so the cap funds come from?
So we're Cassie's.
Okay.
When someone builds a new place.
And there are no restrictions on how savings can be spent?
The general, yeah, the general savings is 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 soup, it's all sewer.
No, I I meant, oh, I understand that, but but they can be used. You could. Use them any way you want, the savings. They're not specific to, say, maintenance, to capital improvements, to user fees.
You know, they're pretty much capital. It's capital improvements. Did you have a comment?
Well, you can't, can't play, you can't build a vehicle in the back or. It's a replacement repair.
Well, but this just says savings nineteen sixty.
Yeah, I don't know if you have seen that, but the money that we take from people. From the sewer bills can be used for certain days again.
Right.
Replacement and repair and so can't do anything beyond that.
But there are no similar restrictions on the sixteen ninety four savings account?
Um, not to my knowledge, that is, I mean, those accounts were all in existence when I started.
So where do they come from?
Um, I don't know that we have put anything into sixteen ninety four. We've put money into the sewer cap. I think those funds have just been there.
Bringing back the Viola document, I think maybe it would be good for you to get one more check to those accounts to make sure that there's nothing flagged in there. That, well, the understanding is that for capital improvements, but maybe just give that savings account another check to make sure that. It's all available for that.
Um, I would caution you in depleting that account. Just because if something happened and you needed a hundred thousand dollars to repair something sewer wise in another year. And it's gone, how are we gonna get that hundred thousand?
Well, I agree. I mean, we don't have enough money to do this currently, not from this.
Sixteen ninety four.
And so you know, you don't know the origin of that. Sorry.
No, I don't.
Okay.
But it's, it's, we have the same thing for the general fund. We have the same thing for the water fund. They've all been in existence. There's a separate water cap, there's a separate sewer cap. And the general fund savings, when there's too much money in the checking. By transfer to the savings to earn interest until we need those monies.
Right.
Because, for example, we get tax money in a big chunk, so a lot of that goes into the savings to earn interest. Until we need it and then we draw that into the general fund as we need it. Same thing, that's the way I'm sure that the the sewer savings and the water savings were designed is when. Excess funds can be put in there to earn, then they can be drawn back down.
Is there anything in the um, charter for the enterprise fund that requires a certain amount of money to remain in? In the backup status? I can't remember the name of it. No, no, where you've got.
We just have.
Yeah, reserves.
The honest for recommend seventeen percent.
Reserves.
I'm not sure if during the charter, if there were any um, enterprise funds or.
No, the the term, you're not in the city charter. But no, I just meant into management of your department, what you're.
We still wanna keep a percentage there because, you know, I never know if a lift station is gonna go down and you need to go buy a pump. I mean, we gotta have some sort of emergency contingency on hand. Um, for repairs, but. We don't have a working plant.
And my question to you all is, yes, we will be taking um, a significant amount from this account, but it would still leave. Roughly two hundred thousand in reserves.
I I think we're foolish not, and to properly support and to assure that we're successful in this. Knowing already that we're close to a quarter, a three quarters of a million dollars, that we should be planning for a million dollar project. And maybe we come up with seven fifty through this, but I think we're, it should be our aspiration to figure out how to fund. This project or. The next thing that may or may not go wrong, that thing's been down for years now. We're not gonna be able to complete the project in a timely fashion because we're not gonna have the money for the next thing. So I'm just suggesting that here's a chunk of it and I think we need to be looking for another chunk. I'm not saying it precludes moving ahead, but that we need to have a a commitment to finding additional funds in the next few months. Um, I also wonder about the, the. The percentage rates for this existing bond versus what we're getting in savings and then perhaps it's pertinent. And former Eric, people are here, um. I know this was not understood previously, but conceptually we could pull that back money from the water bond, that's not being spent. And ask people to approve it in a May bond because we've already made a commitment to it. So I think we need to be creative and looking for other sources of money.
I hear what you're saying. I would say if we are looking for other sources of money, it would be pertinent for us to identify the other projects as well. So that we're looking for a larger, comprehensive source of money.
Okay, but it delays, I'm just, I'm not.
Yeah, so that's where the intention here would be to. Use the short term, go to the MBR and headworks while looking for the long term. Larger, you know, what's coming up in the next year, two year, five year, and looking at funding sources. I would love to have Christina um, chat this really quick. We did put in a letter, you know. There are letters of interest going out for particular funding that rounds that are coming up. So I'd love for you to talk about what's coming up, what's available. And what would we need to do to prepare for going for that?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Hi, everybody, with the council and city staff, members of the, the press and the public, um. Yes, so uh, right now DEQ, so. Guys, Department of Environmental Quality has the letter of interest, which is essentially like a pre-application. Uh, that is available for the city to pursue potential funds through the DEQ. So right now, that's state revolving fund, which you guys all have for your, for drinking water project. We have S R funds. Um, they also have some, one last year of the bipartisan additional supplementary money. Um, there's kind of a variety of of monies there. Um, this is, this will be the last year for those monies, it it appears. Unless Congress uh, comes back and decides to extend uh, any of those expiration dates, but. What I'm hearing from my sources in DC is that that will likely not be the case. Um, but this is a good year for the city of Bellevue to apply, um, to put that pre-application in and as. As a person that helped the city, uh, Chris and and some others in the room helped with that last application together for the drinking water project. Um, really what it is, is it, it puts you in uh, the running for the options that could be available. And it shows DEQ that you're serious, that you're intentional, that you're proactive, these types of things. Uh, to fix the issues. With your wastewater facility. Um, there is no obligation. So, once DEQ reviews all of those letters of interest during uh, the spring of next year. They'll come back and they'll tell the city whether or not you were basically shortlisted or in a word or not. If you are shortlisted, they'll give you a preliminary understanding of what that package would look like. So, for example, it could include a hundred percent loan. It could be a loan and maybe some grant opportunities there. But there's no obligation for the city to take that on. There obviously, if you were to take on a loan. Uh, or think about taking it along, you'd have to either, you know, go through judicial confirmation. Or you have to go back to your public and, and go through the government bond process, similar to your drinking water project years ago. So, um, those are due, that pre-application, the letter of interest is due uh, January of twenty twenty six. Um, as we're working with DEQ right now, as Andrew and Chris are working with DEQ right now, the compliance folks that are taking a look at the things. Uh, that have been discussed tonight, um, that's actually going to be part of. Some of the timeline that they're gonna propose to the city is. Hey, you have these issues. Does the city wanna proactively like pursue funding? They'll actually try and help you like craft that such that you'll get. Additional points, so to speak. They have a rubric of points. Um, that are kind of outlined for that. And one of those things is if you have any sort of compliance issues or non-compliance. Um, issues, orders, things like that, um, that will all be kind of, you know, evaluated in that letter of interest. Um, so that is probably the primary uh, source that you need to think about. Uh, whether or not you wanna pursue. And everything that you're doing in this workshop tonight, everything that you will do here in the coming weeks as you evaluate, you know, your schedule. What's available, what opportunities, um, you know, the adjustments that need to be made. Kind of in the short term to build on that long term. It also helps to take, it'll help me to better craft. A good narrative to take to the other funding partners that are available. So that's USDA development, that um, there are some smaller buckets of of grant money available. Uh, from some nonprofit organizations. Um, in the Pacific Northwest, in Idaho, uh, there's some environmental groups, um, really. What I really need to know from you all at some point is, what do you wanna pursue? Like, what are your priorities for the next? You know, six months to five years. And then what we can do is we can help craft a good strategic funding plan that makes the most sense that we present to you all. And then we start really like going after some of those uh, buckets. We'll wanna go to the county and talk with them about the work that you all are doing, since what's happening in Bellevue. It doesn't just stay in Bellevue, right? It is either for the betterment or not, for the the greater county. So that will be a conversation that I know I have and get their buy-in and. Yeah, and the city has done some great things. I think the mayor's told you and Chris has told you. Um, you know, our talks with Congressman Simpson's office have have gone very well. Uh, for the drinking water project, so we wanna go back and visit uh, with him. He really does care about what's happening here. And wants to see the improvements. I know you guys are all making a lot of improvements right now. Uh, your, your streets, your lighting, your parks, I mean, all of these things, and they all need to be prioritized, but we can't. You know, forget that there is a cost involved in that. So, you know, I know that you all are are serving your community and so you wanna be really careful about. What kind of loan, what kind of debt you, that that you take on as a community because that. Does get attached to your, your user rate. And that can really impact especially, you know, those citizens who live here and. They have fixed incomes and there are quite a few. I know a lot about your demographics because I've had to become a pretty good student of those during the drinking water project and so. Of course, uh, DEQ is interested in knowing that. Rule development, your county, these other, these other entities. And so I guess my charge to you tonight is really. I I really do recommend that we at a minimum submit that letter of interest document. Uh, we prepare it. It's like a, a form and application and there's some supplement three documents. And we present that uh, just for a final review and submitted.
And to clarify, that funding would be for twenty twenty seven, correct?
So, um, so the funding, yeah, the fiscal year is twenty twenty seven. So essentially the money would be ready or available by July first of twenty twenty six. Which is the state's fiscal year twenty seven. Does that make sense? Everything has a different.
This, this is, you're talking about the SRF?
Yes.
Okay. So what I was mentioning before, and I think you have the main knowledge to this, is doesn't it look better if we can reduce our existing SRF debt potential with our bond? And would that be in any way compelling as part of this presentation to say, we're giving back one million dollars here? And trying to move it instead specific to this other enterprise fund for the sewer? Or that does not, us reducing our, our debt does not matter?
It, it doesn't, um, it doesn't, Councilwoman Reed, because, um, the current SRF that you have an award for is the drinking water SRF. And the revenue bond that is associated with that is for drinking water only. Now, um, I don't know where Merrick is at, uh, with that project. And so I would, I would just, and I could lean in, into, um, or yield to your attorney on that to answer that, or legal question that, um, I would say, don't, I, I would not, I would not recommend reducing anything in your current funding package for your drinking water until it's done. You may, you may not end up using, the city may not end up using much of that loan. Um, because I do know that there, there's a potential, uh, for that award from Congressman Simpson's office on the drinking water.
Well.
That which would reduce the problem. But no, it, it doesn't really play.
Reducing our debt does not matter, our debt, our credit rating, I'm sorry. Changing, improving our credit rating does not.
It does not. No. Your wastewater enterprise is a kind of standalone business.
Yes, I understand that. That's why I say, if we reduced, uh, our debt amount in one area, right? And then, and miss applied for the sewer saying, oh, we only have the six million here instead. Would that be in any way compelling? Because as you know, we missed a lot of deadlines and had a lot of outstanding issues, so.
Yeah, I can't, I'm sorry, I can't really speak any longer to the drinking water project, but what I can say is that.
It's DEQ compliance. I'm sorry, I was speaking to.
Sorry about that. Um, yeah, I misunderstood. Um, so, so no, they, I mean, they'll look at it and they'll say, okay, you're paying X amount of dollars for your drinking water, paying X amount of dollars for your wastewater right now. But then they'll say, we don't really, we don't analyze or take into account what you're paying as far as your drinking water rates or your debt service on your drinking water enterprise relative to.
Debt, just debt, it's city debt, right? That's all we're talking about. Okay, and I guess then I absolutely can't support any additional loans that will encumber the residents.
Which was, which was. Well, and that was my, yeah, so.
So, yeah.
I think that there's been a lot of discussion, um, you know, we have a current bond on our waste, with our wastewater facility that I think sunsets in twenty thirty one. So, and we've talked a lot about water, you know, wastewater fees. And my intention here is not to take on more debt to get the plant operational because our residents have been paying for a facility since it went down. And debt on facility that hasn't been operating to its intended capacity.
Right.
So the intention here is to not take on more debt to get us operational. Where we could consider grants or debt in the future is for upgrades, creating more efficiency. Uh, you know, if we go down the line, looking at UV, there, there are a lot of ways we could take the Keller facility plan and work to make our wastewater facility more efficient in the future and take on debt when it makes sense. So that was my intention of saying, how would you, how would we utilize the reserves we have that we've been building for situations like that we find ourselves at without creating more debt for our community? And so I understand that we should potentially plans for more. But right now the numbers we're receiving, um, focused on the MDR and the headworks. If we utilize our fiscal year twenty six budget and our reserves, does not deplete our funds with the numbers we're currently looking at.
Could I say one more thing?
Yeah, please.
That I think could also, you know, help enlighten everybody, uh, in the room and online, is that what DEQ is concerned about other, you know, obviously the environmental issues, the health, the public health and safety issues that, you know, the current uh, wastewater facility is, is having some challenges with. Is that they do, that the numbers they do care about are your current, your existing customer rate in comparison to the median household income that is identified through the US Census. So, and I'm happy to send everybody here a, a copy of, or the link, uh, which DEQ uses to evaluate what your MHI is. Um, but they are concerned, they're concerned when you get to a, a monthly user rate of over two percent of your median household income. So your user rates are what, ninety six dollars a month now or so for wastewater? So what you would do is you, you know, you would take that and say what percentage of, of the median household income, so an average, you know, member of your community. What is, what's their average, uh, you know, what is their median household income? And look at what is two percent, what's above two percent of that? And I think that when I looked at this a while back, when you, you know, uh, performing the work on the drinking water, um, letter of interest and some of those other applications. That when you look at that, I, I think you guys are pretty well over that two percent and only on the wastewater. And where we make the further case on, you know, affordability factors, which is a real big issue for DEQ. They want to make sure that people can afford to pay reasonable rates for their basic needs. And your wastewater is a basic need, right? And so some of the, some of the case that we made for them was that, you know, the city is paying a very large percentage of its, a typical user is paying a, a pretty big share of its income every month just to pay for two services, your water and your wastewater. So that does seem to impact, that argument does seem to impact DEQ because it did. And it, and what that can do is that can weigh, um, in on what part of the offer would be more grant versus, or so. Which is what the city received with SRF. There was what was called principal forgiveness, a pretty good chunk. And then they threw in some, some grant money that, from the legislature, things like that. But that also plays into, you know, what, when the other agencies like USDA Development and other agencies are looking at that, they want, they want to also help with that because they understand that Bellevue is, you know, blue collar. I mean, there, there's a lot of different types of folks that, that live within this valley, and it's not all billionaires, right? So, so there's a, there's a real affordability issue there. So they are concerned with that.
My question, um, Chris and Andrew would be, would be only, uh, just thinking about how the financial commitment would work if we're ordering the membranes and not potentially receiving them till July? Do we have in that first proposal, do we have an understanding of how the financial commitment would work? How much we're paying at one time? Is it all paid upfront? Um, I apologize, I, if you.
There, if it was broken out in the quotes. So there was a portion that was upfront of initial order. And I don't know if it was forty-ish percent, and then the final payment is due upon shift. So you haven't, there's, there is a pretty big gap that's, that's a short order of, um, at delivery. We pay her within third days of delivery. But it was broken out, but they did send that, um, that quote, can we get it updated? It's okay to end a new one. And then also that quote was them coming in, out on site to get it started up and test to just make sure it's working. So that was like a waste worth of, two, two to three people coming out, not doing the physical install, but all start up again.
I'd love to hear back, feedback from other council members in terms of the. Yeah. What you'd like to see?
Great to see, uh, two is updated, um, updated proposals. And, and what the terms are for the proposals. And then really more clear instructions as well on, on what, I mean, I know what cap fees are and how savings, like just what's, what the different parameters are for, or the funding streams that we have so that we're using them appropriately. And I do, I mean, I, I support a similar for a letter, a letter also, Lena. It's not, there's nothing wrong with it and, and it align, gets us aligned with potential funding streams uh, that we can make wise decisions on whether we pursue them or not versus not doing anything and then having no options. Check, check it, check, thank you very much.
I'm actually ready to make a motion about the, uh, the headworks channel repair.
Okay.
As far as the other, I think, yeah, there's more information to be gathered and we should gather that and then we will agree on what, as you said, I'm sorry. Um, but I would move to authorize a marriage, any contact within the city of Bellevue or advanced lining LRC performance surface preparation installed of OPIIC one thousand anti-layer system onto one headworks channel. Um, okay, point three hundred, or uh, I think exactly an air fee for, for, uh, or total project cost thirty six to forty. That would be paid from, uh, the fiscal twenty six budget, either line item five eleven sixty or fifty eight hundred and twenty, um, instead of reserves.
Second.
Council President Che.
Oh, yes.
Councilmember Birkin.
Yes.
Councilmember Mahoney.
Yes.
Councilmember Reed.
No.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Councilmember Obena.
Yes.
That motion passes.
Line N B, we have a resolution for the purchase of the membranes. Um, there's an action item, but anyone's ready to move on it or continue it to next meeting?
As I understand, you know, it's an action item, we don't have to take any action. For me, because without the appropriate information, there's no.
Okay. I agree.
Noting that.
Thanks.
Before I conclude the workshop, um, I wanted to take an opportunity to take any comments or questions from the audience or people potentially come in to listen to the discussion and participate, if there's anyone.
My only comment, Jeff Neal, I'm the resident nice of Front Hill Road, affected by the smelt. And you're not operation for a long time, so, you know, the concern we have, uh, we would have, I think, is residents there would be the, the delay in the installation of anything. And by not doing anything with the membrane, by tweeting, is now gonna delay it for a little longer. Then puts us at risk of further delays in delivery, which then puts us on the next call. So, so, you know, that's the concern.
Thank you. Does anyone on the council feel comfortable making a decision, you know, to move forward in one way or the other on membranes? With quotes coming in, um, as to not affect a delay, or would you guys like to wait two weeks for the next meeting? For all the information requested to inform the decision?
Will it be possible, will it be possible to get the information if I'm looking for a agenda?
No, I'm sorry, I mean, I have a good question. So, so I, I would just say, we know there's only one place to get these, all right? So no matter what they cost and what it's gonna be, we're gonna have to figure out where we come up with those funds. If we go ahead and start moving forward with them tonight, by the time I get the quotes back and we review them again for a not to exceed total, we'll be ahead of the game. And we're still needing your guys' concerns. Um, if I have to, I can put a, you know, six weeks, uh, we can do a stop order if, if we don't like the numbers, if we don't, if we see that there's something that you don't like. Um, I can have them in the, in the quotes. I can give a few that if we opt out by this date, we are not held to any fiscal, uh, responsibility. But again, we're still gonna have to get them from them eventually.
I would be hard, like, that's fifty thousand or a hundred thousand. We're talking about a big chunk of money and I'm not. And I know it's putting it off for a couple of weeks, and you know it's gonna happen. But I still have to, we're obligated to the whole city to look at this wisely and make the most, the best informed decision financially and not, not just, not pretend like we're ordering a fifty thousand dollar car. So, I guess that's at least my take on that, so.
Yeah, I think if the next steps in the assignment's gonna be done in two weeks, that's great, and we should have that information then. That, then.
And then we can come up with a good plan to the articulation. Like be able to articulate this to the public about what we're doing so that then they feel comfortable, we're not just doing this piece and this piece, right, has been said. And we're applying for, and it's gonna be no matter, and, you know, this is, it's comprehensive, everything we're doing is comprehensive.
I agree.
Okay. With that, I think we'll move on from our workshop. Um, I think that staff has been given direction, we have direction for Great West, um, we do our next steps assignments here. Um, if there's anything that comes up between now and then between questions, please send emails on that. And I appreciate you all for participating. I think, you know, we've a really good take on short-term, long-term, and, um, some intentions of this council in particular with, um, with good and robust future planning for wastewater facilities. So thank you for all your feedback. And thank you to kind of one for Great West and me, for participating. Thank you for being here.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes.
With that, I will move on to item number seven, our consent agenda. You have a list of items here for approval.
I'd like to pull out the water project update for a couple of questions, please.
Okay. Any questions or clarifications on items above, um, item G of paper.
Uh, and also number D needs to come out, please, approval of ninety five thirty six about express bill fair.
So we're pulling, this time pulling D and G for further discussion.
Yes, please.
Um, the resolutions, I don't know, there's, don't strike me as consent agenda items. I, I don't know quite who I read, that's just different than my experience, but, um, I don't know, resolution, usually there's maybe even an outfit for public comment. Um, these, these are great for, I appreciate that and take time to, you know, work, but it don't seem like.
We'll take back feedback. I think they, there is some redundancy to a couple of these things, that's why I went in. But I will take back feedback, and if you would like to pull anything else, please, I mean.
Anybody, do you pull those or?
I, I, I think, no, I, I think they, they should be oral, that, that, time-wise, I don't think it's gonna cost us any time, but I, reservations. There's a little more involved in this appropriate consent agenda.
And.
But as far, maybe I do have a, but the, uh, claims. Claims, uh, my, one of the was for engineering with Great West regarding the Myers application.
No, all my stuff is now coming.
And, uh, I was just curious. That there's a, a bill from Great West for thing related to the Myers application. Um, and I was just curious about what we know about the status of that, is there? Uh, appraisal ever done, are they still talking to each other, do we, you know, anything about? Evolution of that?
Yeah, I did, right, right, I mean, building director, uh, the. Uh, claim for that was for engineer view on their street and public utility improvements, uh, which have been. Revisited engineer approved for construction, uh, they should be starting preliminary work in the next couple of weeks. Uh. The agreement with the land trust and part of the, part of their final plat's available, uh, requirements. Uh, a brief conversation with the, with their. On that front. The bigger indication, they're feeling confident about the progress on that as their turn.
And I guess the only other thing on the America letter, just maybe a general comment, not that.
We are gonna pull that for further discussion, you wanna hold that comment? Yes, thank you.
Otherwise, I will approve the consent agenda.
Did you say that? No, I didn't. Second, bye.
Councilmember Obena.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Councilmember Mahoney.
Yes.
Council President Che.
Yeah.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
Councilmember Birkin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, we will move on to the item D from the consent agenda, for further discussion, this is approval of resolution number twenty five dash thirty six. Authorizing an amendment to the express bill pay contract to remove a five hundred dollar transaction limit. Shelley, would you like to speak to this?
Yes. So let's you make your treasure. Um. When we initially transferred to the south instead of express bill pay, it was not made clear at that point because we were focusing on utility payments. Um, but we are now taking building permit payments, fencing, and all, all payments that come through the city. And many of those charges can be several thousand dollars and we have customers who want to play with their credit card. Well, it would be known to us, we have a five hundred dollar limit on anyone being able to pay through express bill pay on a credit card. So to resolve that, uh, express bill pay basically says we change your percentage from three percent. To three point five percent and then you don't have that limitation. So the three percent plus the sixty five cents, I believe I explained this in the map home. Is equivalent to a three point five percent for our basic one thirty point fifty five customer. So it really uh is no change to our primary customer, but it allows us to take larger payments. By credit card for our customers instead of having to go in five hundred dollar increments and do multiple transactions. That's all it does. And those fees are paid and um by the customer, that's how it's all been set up since, since you approved all of this in the beginning.
So. This is like what happens when you go to a car dealership and transaction fees are the bread and butter of this group. So yes, for the hundred and thirty uh exactly at that range, a number that's gonna change for a large. Number of the residents as we go to metering. Um, it doesn't change, but for everything below seventy eight thirty three and above one thirty. It increases and it can increases considerably over what people pay now, so to me, those are the residents and cost to the residents that I think. Um, are, are just, it, it's just not acceptable to see somebody making a five hundred dollar payment. And now they're paying almost two dollars more for that payment, so I appreciate that you have to do with that limitation, I think you've also been boxed in, as you know. Um, by Casell and the limitations of that system, but to pass to continue to just escalate these. These fees and services, um, because we haven't implemented appropriate systems does not, does not seem acceptable to me. Everything but this very narrow range um goes up for the residents for, for a, a twenty five dollar transaction, you're paying three dollars for a fifty dollar transaction, paying five dollars. All of those things would, are currently a lot less and should be a lot less.
So just so you understand, Casell has nothing to do with this in terms of this relationship and these fees. Right? Um, and um, secondly, customers realize there's a cost when they use their credit cards. It's everywhere, I mean, you know, get away from.
For example, Mahoney's recharge our credit card fee. You have to.
Yeah.
And it's, it's, uh, it's the going rate these days. Now you use a credit card, you gotta pay.
And square charge is one rate and this group charge is something different, it's two point nine nine. So there are other charges, it's, it's about how much and how we just keep escalating all these additional. Costs, so I think we all understand, we agreed at the beginning of the year, that, that charges, certain amount of charges for services were appropriate. But to just pile these things on, um, I, I, I mean, we just talked about affordability, we talked about. The cost of the utilities and the services we provide and here we are saying, but heck, we'll, we'll throw on another this amount for this group and this amount for this group. For really no discernible reason, I understand your five hundred dollar limit. But as we already know, there are a lot of other options out there that are less than what we're paying now, so now we're, we're going up into a whole new premium. And the truth is, the more, in most organizations that. You know, that don't get an opportunity like this where they say, oh, if you wanna, they make more money on whatever the transaction fee. They wanted to get more money out of it, us, and so this was the deal that they gave us and I. Would suggest either that you go back and renegotiate this and say, you gotta be kidding, it wasn't born yesterday, right? Or we need to look for another provider, because this, these fee rates are not acceptable to me. Um, especially as we're talking about affordable living in Valby.
Up there in your, I'm asking this because it's kind of your background, your expertise in terms of software. Um, what's the, what's the analysis of a percentage cost of changing users? And the uptake of employees learning a new system and changing systems potentially frequently when you're cost comparing and. If we don't like your rate, okay, we change to a different provider, what is, there's, there's cost there for changing providers?
Just like Intel and Nvidia, it really depends how well your render business. And that's what the cost uh appoints to and they'll.
So, and the only reason I think so, I ask that is because if we do, you know, say, okay, we shop around, I don't know, vendor. Um, there, there's a cost, right, for new technology acquisition, there's cost for employee changing. Of the habits or how it plays into our system, so there, there's.
Pass it on to the resident, got it.
I, I didn't say pass it on to the resident.
Just talking about.
I'm trying to have an actual discussion about this.
Alright, go ahead.
And you're going somewhere completely different, I'm trying to respect your craft and what you do and help us generally understand. You know, the, the passing on of credit card fees was a decision we made collectively. And I understand that there is increased cost, but right now, the staff being able to, you know, take payments max out of five hundred. The feedback has been that customers come in and want to pay these bills and want to pay, they know that there's credit card fee. And so if we shop around to save point two five percent on credit card fees for the residents of the customer. There is also a cost that ends up back at the customer because it costs us more for staff time to then bring on new technologies. I'm simply asking, is there a percentage that you know of? That is that employee cost of changing technologies and what that could look like when we're analyzing the cost of.
I do not have a specific percentage, I imagine it's commensurate to the lost revenue of. Of getting over the additional monies that people pay for service fees that could have been collected by us, so instead of having. Uh, for a, a five hundred dollar charge, instead of giving almost two dollars to a tran, to the transaction company. We could have actually gathered the, the almost two dollars in fees, so something probably.
Going back to the idea, going back to the idea of what we looked at these two. We said we could. Take on the fees and it would cost us, there was a percentage there, right, let's say it was like two point nine.
Same thing, same, it was the same.
Same thing, okay.
We paid the same, we, we would have paid them, so yes.
Okay, well, we decided as a council to pass it on to the customer.
That, 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 that we felt that this amount, you can make that decision and say, heck, let's go with five percent, let's go with six percent.
Does this take just one payment, like, what if you wanna use cell? Like, I use cell pay certain things through my bank.
But, but you're gonna have to, even if you're a business and how cell works too, you still have to pay an interest rate through cell, so.
I'm sure there's a fee for it. And there is a way for people to choose which, like, PayPal or, or, or Venmo or whatever, will Casell take multiple payers?
No, the payments actually are going through express bill pay. So they can do a check, they can do a credit card, they can do a debit card.
And then A C H is, and then if you pay via A C H directly from your banking account, then.
Yes, you can, that's true then.
And then there's no fee, right?
There is a fee.
No, there's a fee for every transaction.
Except, there's not a priority check on my bill.
No, there's no fee, that's why people use the drop box.
A C H is, is still, you still have, there's still a fee.
If it's processed through express bill pay.
Right.
Now, we're still processing sixty six to seventy thousand dollars of A C Hs that we. We chose to keep this service for our customer and Maria is. Processing those and there is no fee for that amount of, of payments that we're processing, but it does take her time.
Well, I also, to your point about changing software, I believe there's another item on here talking about, um, a changer process. Um, so I believe this is relevant to that conversation as well, so we could potentially wait for that. In discussing other opportunities that are more cost effective for the residents and more efficient for the city because. Unified for, for, um, various payments and things like that, so we can talk about it there, but I, I certainly. To me, um, I think it's either going back and renegotiating, saying, no way, or. Um, that we need to look for, for another system, like I think everyone knows I advocate for anyway.
Other council members.
May I ask a question, my question, Suzanne, is the other item you're referring to, the, this?
Pay velocity. Pay velocity about the payroll, yes. Next one. I just think they tie in, I think they tie into the city trying to run accounting more efficiently and our financials more efficiently and giving. You know, us better opportunities for fiscal management and. Um, and costs.
But that's exactly what we're trying to do.
But at this time, without the pertinent information, I just want to make sure, without pertinent information to review or consider. For us to authorize. The, to remove the five hundred dollar transaction limit. And still allow residents. The opportunity to choose to pay in pennies, in dollars, in checks, in credit card, whatever way they so choose. She's really up to them, right? But if, but if we wanted then look at. Or ask to consider a different way, we can look at that in the future, but this will at least save. The, the title that takes our staff the process. If someone's got a two thousand dollar bill that they, because of permit, they are trying to do four. Processes at four times. That's unnecessary time. For, it's, we're throwing away. Pennies, we're throwing away dollars to save a penny.
But they're charged that many times or different times and then they get that interest rate, yeah.
Yeah, they're, they're still finding, yeah.
Can I ask a question, Shelley, how often does that happen, do you know, that people actually pay with their credit cards a two thousand dollar bill, not very often, right?
It seems like it's happening more, as people are getting educated, that they can do all this through express bill pay. That express bill pay, we haven't even tapped the ability. Of what we can do through that, that service, and I think that is a really good partnership for the future of our city and other. Potential communications and things like that, and um, it, it, they. They are leader in the industry and their fee is their fee, I mean, it's. There's no going back and saying, I wanna negotiate with this, but three point five is how we get rid of the five for the dollar limit.
Well, I'm gonna throw a motion out there, mayor.
Okay.
Uh, to adopt resolution twenty five dash thirty six. A resolution of the city of Valby, Idaho, approving an amendment to the express bill pay contract to remove the five hundred dollar transaction limit and modify fees.
Councilmember Birkin.
Yes.
Councilmember Reed.
No, because this is an additional taxation for services on the residence.
Councilmember Obena.
Yes.
Council President Che.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Councilmember Mahoney.
Yes.
The motion passes.
I would think, let me see, there's a, this little taxation, like, you just threw that out there, just to see. Why would I just ask, right, I may not, sorry, ask some question, please, okay. Why would you throw that out there and stick that on as if we're making everybody pay that and we're not giving them any choice? You made it sound like we're, that's additional taxation. And I'm just, I'm asking for clarification because that is a choice, right, that's a choice, so that's not an additional taxation.
Online payment is a service, it's something we chose to offer to the residents.
And they don't have to do it.
They don't have to do it, you don't have to drive a car, you don't have to use the ride, you can, absolutely, but it's a service that we were providing at one price. And now we've decided for the convenience of City Hall that they will pay more for a very simple service. For which the one that we've chosen is the most expensive in the industry. And I, I believe that they are now paying additional monies for the service that was offered called online bill pay, which is actually something that many communities. Have tried to move everyone to, but now this makes it an even less affordable option to people who would wanna embrace it, so it's become even less affordable. To live in Valby. Fortunately, the law.
Pay with a credit card, and if your choice is to pay with a credit card, then you're giving yourself really speed.
Yeah, it's not an additional taxation, I just wanted to make sure that that.
So this is not a service that Valby offers.
It, it's a service that, yeah, but it doesn't, it's not a taxation, that's not, there's a big difference. Between taxation and a service.
It's money collected for services.
Other point made on that, we're gonna move on to item G. From the consent agenda that we pulled, our water project update for American Company. Tom, I'll start with you because I asked to hold your question or comment.
The, I guess my, uh, yeah, it was just kind of a comment about that. Update, uh, I've always, I've, I've always appreciated actually the thoroughness of the updates that have been provided by Great West and. And in particular, I think it's been, you know, a great resource that respond to questions and kind of anticipate questions, anticipate issues and address them upfront. Uh, America's not measured up in a skinch way, I think, it's just unfortunate. Uh, there were things that they kind of promised delivery on in September that we hadn't seen, um, I know there was a meeting, it was kind of held where they did write some updates to staff and others and. And maybe even, we need to hear more about what happened, that we need to get a better idea for where this is, but I guess it's not just being very helpful of this.
Thank you.
Uh, what is completion of the facility plan, well, twenty five, I mean. I don't remember that being a project, a, a item in the, the long item.
The, the facility plan was presented and voted on, the, the completion of it. Is that was, the one we voted on was the.
The preliminary, yeah, the D Q wants preliminary and then it had to be reapproved by the council and. That was done, and so now they had to finish up, and by finishing it, it had. Some environmental, um, I wanna say that it had cultural and environmental, so they have to work with, uh. Potentially Army Corps of Engineers, but. It, it's all, it's now finalized by DEQ and council has. So they're just getting the final draft printed out, so it says, that longer says, uh, preliminary.
So where is this contained in the items that were stated to be accomplished in, uh, in this project? What part of the document includes this work and the payment for this, the, the bid for this work and the line items?
But I believe that was done with the initial vetting and contract with Merrick, because that was first part of. Before the bond was even, um, approved, we were working on it, we had a money approved for the facility plan through DEQ.
So this is erroneously listed here, I would guess, right? Since this is supposed to be about.
But having come back in, because there was still some public comment period that was going to be available, I believe.
Well, I'm not concerned that, that work's being done, it seems to be as correctly associated with an update about the water plan.
So the facility plan is the plan for the water project.
My understanding is there was a lot of unknowns when they went into this plan, we didn't know if we needed to move the collection site, we didn't know. Sadly, the extent of how much money this was gonna cost and what we were gonna do, or knew we were engineering. After we got the engine, after the engineering, the, uh.
The, the surveys. The surveys.
And then they were going to come up with the plan, though what they're actually going to end up doing. Um, and that was supposed to be go through some sort of process where we approve it or not approve it, change it.
And we've done all that, so we've done the facility plan, and that was one of the, gave us the alternatives, and we chose the cheapest nine million dollar alternative.
Right.
But they had to get finalized by DEQ, and so this is the final step to get it, they, they said. DEQ has now approved the facility plan, which now allows them to get into preliminary engineering where it comes in to say. We can go up over the road, that there's not enough topography to, um, have us to detour through the property. Um, and that also will play into if, if we stay more on the road versus digging through fields or going into new locations. Um, it reduces the amount of, uh, cultural impact studies that need to be happened and environmental impact. Because it's already been disturbed road, it's already been improved once, so it doesn't matter if they dig through it again. So this was just a checkmark that said, okay, DEQ is now has accepted, you have finalized. Facility plan, which allows us to go into the engineering design work now that we have the, um, survey.
So this is part of which project or all five projects, it's a percentage of all five projects that are associated with the bond?
Yes, because it's still had to talk about the widening project up at, uh, at the north end of town, and so, yes, it has.
Well, that's, that's not part of the bond, is it?
Yes.
That's the seventy-five, changes both seventy-five, okay.
So there's still another layer of, they're gonna show us the plan, there's gonna be.
There's, yes, there'll be a preliminary engineering design that comes out that'll get a chance to have public comment and review by the water team, by the council, public input. Um, why we're choosing this or that, or why they need to do it one or the other. If there's hard feelings about something, it can still be changed and as we move it through our finalized plan before we start getting, moving forward to put it out to bid. And it, and it has to be approved for DEQ, the engineering has to be approved to DEQ before we can go to bid.
And, and what's the complete mapping associated with the MOU? That's not the easement mapping, that's the actual land mapping should be done in November, is that right?
That's the map, so. The water meeting happened with a ninety percent easement map that was shown, um, to the landowner. There were a couple of requests for changes and additional information on it. So that is the completing of the mapping associated with the MOU, there was a couple of things in the MOU he wanted to see on the map.
So this is easement mapping, right, that was left out?
Well, there's, it's easement plus, he wanted some water tank, there's other mapping on.
So this is the complete mapping?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It's, it's the. Conditions map, topography, and, um, current structures out there.
Okay, so great, conditions and easements, that's the.
And there was feedback from the landowner, and so there was changes that were being made to the mapping.
Okay, so end of November, that's all done.
Yes.
Yep, great, thank you.
And I do apologize on behalf of them, um, they've had staffing changes over, so they no longer have Christina that is writing up the, the monthly reports. Um, they, you know, Chelsea, they just recently brought on to fill that role, um, so we should see better, uh, more informed reports of this.
If there's anything in particular that you feel is lack, that you feel is lacking now, I think then it would be important to give. There's particular feedback we can send to them to say, we would like your report, your memo to contain. X or the, be more robust in this way, because, you know, we did start doing reporting with Great West, this is reported with Merrick, this. We did determine, hey, we didn't need, you know, them on Zoom, and it can just be part of a consent agenda once a month. If you feel that's changed, please advise, we can make adjustments. Um, with, uh, the map, when the mapping is completed and, I mean, the next time we had planned to really have them come back was with the, um. Preliminary engineering plans, which is kind of the most, the important next steps. And so that would be the big presentation, have robust discussion time, but if you feel between now and then you'd like. Them to present or update in some way, uh, please just advise and we can make that happen.
Yeah, I know my criticism was not very constructive, you know, just to say, this seemed bad, but, um, maybe I'll spend a little time trying to get a little more familiar and then. Okay, offer something.
I can offer that, I would like it to be by project, because there are five projects, and I would like to know, um, the current cost of easements as identified. Um, because that was almost a million dollar, um, planning amount, and I would like to know if we're over or under what was expected. Um, to be fair, I can't remember the number, whether SS one or, um, but the, that was one of the five that are associated with the bond. I think since they're completed, since these map, map should be completed or is completed, we should know.
So Brad, I see the, um, the Great West one, how there's like work, work item this, and, you know, we're gonna have them laid out like you think in project one through five, is what you're saying.
Yeah, just the status of each project, um, and our level of, you know, any deadline that have or have not been met against the. Agreement, and like I said, just I think there's some very specific numbers associated with all those projects and especially the easements. How much is it really costing now that you cannot dial the?
There's, we shouldn't have.
Okay, yeah.
Is it zero?
No, no.
I keep saying we're staying for easements, and we've never had a paper.
We're.
It's already exists.
We've identified easements that already exist, but there could be, if we have to move, um, the pipeline or if we have to go in a different direction with the pipeline, we may have to negotiate. But that would be giving up our current easement to move it over here, so there may not be a cost associated or maybe a limited cost associated. It may, uh, be us just paying for, um, the county platting of it all.
Great, so.
But I don't know that, because we have to, until they do.
Preliminary engineering.
Until they do the engineering, say which way they're gonna go with the pipe, um, we're not gonna know where we may or may not need easements, so those are still in discussion.
Okay, so right now it's expected to be zero, it's not a commitment, simply a status, zero.
But there's, there's costs associated with the.
Yeah, just a financial associated with each, we should have the financials associated with each project that are.
I would say that it's still assessed at a million dollars, because we've had to put in money to get the MOU. To make certain standards for the landowner to be able to get access, so, which was also that can be paid through the easement negotiation funding, so. If we're gonna go to the point where I'm not gonna shortchange myself and say it's only gonna be a hundred thousand. I'm gonna say right now, if we budgeted for a million, it's still gonna be a million unless I hear something in the next, after the preliminary engineering comes out and they make an agreement. And we have it in writing that says this is what these things are going to be.
It's simply a, a process of providing updates on what you know so far, and what you know so far is that you're not aware of any costs per purchasing land. And again, I didn't create what you all submitted for the, the bond. I'm simply responding to what has been documented and associated with the bond materials, that's all I'm asking.
I made notes.
Thank you.
For that, and I'm happy to pass that along and see what we can get out of that, thank you.
And I, because I know, I'm, I'm, this was brought up before, when it, when it's in the. In the consent agenda, and unless, like, I, I was never comfortable with being in the consent agenda. I don't know if I missed, like, I wanted it to be separate, but I think how it came up was that we wanted it pulled out, we could have the best out of pulled out.
Uh-huh.
And I just think for the sake of. As, as contentious as this can be. If, if it was its own, right, I don't, that's pulled out from a consent agenda, it doesn't look like we're trying to rush through some.
Well, and we can also discuss staff time, so then having Mayor from Zoom available to have, have those discussions with us.
And that would be like the once a month.
Yeah, it's only comes out once a month at this point.
And, and, yeah, so if, if that's all, it is, just to, just to keep it as transparent and top of mind for, for everyone. I mean, that's my recommendation, I'm on our person, trying to, running, I'm just trying to see.
Any other questions, comments on the Merrick memo?
I did it.
Thank you.
All right.
Did you, did we pull those other resolutions?
Resolution twenty-five thirty-seven to deal with spell.
This doesn't have an action on itself. Okay, we are going to move on to the new business portion of the agenda. This is item A approval, resolution number twenty-five thirty-eight, operation of mayor on behalf of the city of Valby, entering into contract for Paylocity. Cloud-based platform that provides payroll processing services. Um, Shelley, uh, you presented.
Since, um. Since going to the Cassell software and working with the payroll module, we went live in March and. Our payroll clerk, Marcy, has had incredible difficulties with the payroll module. That's not to say it's a hundred percent Cassell, but it's, I think it's a combination of, Cassell is not a very user-friendly system. Um, but anyway, in the. Six months we've been running payrolls on there, not one of them has been clean for her, and they have been taking. Probably a minimum of two days of her time each payroll, that's two days every two weeks. And if you add up the time that she has spent working on it and resolving issues, um. The mayor and I talked briefly one day, and I said, why don't I research payroll options, what's out there? I know there are payroll companies that do this, that are professionals at it, that could ease some of our stress. Because it has created a stressful situation for our payroll clerk. Um, so when I started to look at it, I, um, I first checked into QuickBooks and what our options with QuickBooks are. And then I researched ADP, Paycheck, Paylocity, and Paycom, all major companies that any of them could. Perform our payroll. So when I realized that the cost of that is less than what we're paying now to Cassell. And or what we would potentially think QuickBooks, which I do not believe is our best option for, um, payroll. Um, simply because QuickBooks is forcing everyone to online QuickBooks, and I have worked with online QuickBooks and. Uh, it is not nearly as. Um, comprehensive as QuickBooks desktop is, so anyway. You have my spreadsheet that outlines the costs for each and every one of these programs. And it just so happens that the number one choice happened to be the, the least expensive choice. Um. The things that they're offering, um, timing-wise is kind of critical, because. They're, um, offering to do our twenty twenty-five W twos and ten ninety-nines, which I currently have. In two system, well, half of it in QuickBooks, and then transferred into Cassell. I can tell you right now, I'll probably spend at least a week of my time trying to figure out how to do them and get them done through Cassell. But they would do them free for us for twenty twenty-five if we implement right away. I mean, timing is critical, because they have to process our payrolls for December. So anyway, the more that I researched this, and I spent considerable time looking at all this, um, it just kind of. Made me realize that we could free up Marcy's time to be spent doing other things. Uh, and maybe it's, um, you know, um, getting the, uh, accounts payable, uh, more digital towards. Towards moving into the technology nature, right? Right now we're totally paper. Um, but. The cost to go to Paylocity is less than what we're paying now, and it will probably reduce staff time by minimal a hundred percent. I mean, it's just, um. I think it would be a good move for. Our.
For everybody.
For our stress.
Sorry, man.
Uh, tax, taxes, I mean, um, they take full responsibility for that. Um, it, it, it just would really ease up, um, a, a lot of, with our small staff trying to deal with everything that we have, I think it would be a good move.
And I wanna be, uh, transparent that we did present this information to our payroll clerk and had a robust discussion with her about it. Um, to make sure that she was on board with it, uh, to understand, uh, you know, how she would still. Lead, lead the charge on payroll, she still has to do Percy individually and Percy reporting and all of that, um, this would just free up the, the Cassell payroll. Side of it and allow her to focus on the backlog of other work that she has not been able to get to. So, um, I just wanted to make sure that she was, we wanna make sure she was on board for it, so. She is open to it, she's on board for it and, um, sees, sees the value in it. Um, and then I also wanted to make note that there, the timekeeping services, um, we believe would be more efficient for staff right now. Uh, the, the different departments who are trying to time keep right now using the Cassell software, um, are having trouble with that every month, so. One, the, the initial was, hey, let's just go back to QuickBooks, right? And when Shelley did the cost analysis, that's why we ended up at Paylocity, because we weren't having these, you know, issues in QuickBooks, so. We're down this path, you know, with Cassell, we are where we are, the Cassell module, um, for payroll is separate, and so since it isn't. Part of the base cost, and we could pull it out, it's, it was something Shelley deemed worth reviewing, and here's the presentation for you. But just wanna make sure you know, staff was discussed before I presented this.
Thank goodness.
We're getting there.
There a contract?
It is monthly, huh?
No, no, with, in Cassell, with their, that payroll part, are we in a contract at all with them?
Uh, no, it's a monthly, we can add and deduct services.
Without penalty?
Yeah.
And it doesn't increase the cost of the other services that they provide.
No, I have a detailed of what everything costs us, and we're currently paying to sell, uh, total of about twenty-seven hundred dollars a month. And the payroll-related sections, they, they have it divided out into numerous things like W twos and all that, that there's a. We're paying a monthly fee for that, which is, they're done once a year. Um, whereas with these companies, it's a once a year charge, like seven dollars a W two, I mean, it's, it's a simple thing, it's not a thirty-eight dollars a month just to have that, sir. Brandon, you have a question?
Yeah.
It's gotta be better than Cassell and QuickBooks. I've done it for over twenty years and. I'm still hesitant about changing after, and, but. One now is horrible, it takes me twice as long or ten times as long to go into each employee and put that they're a fire drill. On, on Tuesday, um, first, so hopefully it's not worse than that, but.
These guys are pros at it, I mean, they, they, that's what they specialize in. I forgot to tell you, I, I, um, learned of another company locally, well, in there throughout. Do you dare say who it is or anything, does that matter?
I don't know, but a local company.
A local company that has over six hundred employees throughout Idaho, and they use Paylocity. And her quote was, it's a godsend. Um, she had nothing bad to say about it, the gal I talked to was in Rhode Island, and, um, they love it, so. Anyway.
Any questions?
No, that's good.
I have a lot of questions. Uh because I'm pretty sure I've been saying this for months. I'm pretty sure that I tried to introduce this transition during the budget when everyone tried to malign me for for perfectly professional email to Marcy where you're all now moving in that direction anyway. I don't know if you listen to yourselves. We currently pay thirty thousand dollars for a a accounting system that is inferior. And now we wanna charge more money for the payment processing because we've chosen an inferior product there. And yes, Paylocity has some value. They are, there are, uh to your point, you won't be entering things in because these time tracking should have geo fencing and they work off your mobile phone, so all the time that gets put in is a lot of it is automated. The reason I come back to QuickBooks is it's a thorough system. You can talk about the complexity of Cassell, we're still getting spreadsheets. Not financial reports that you haven't moved into all these different things, but spreadsheets when there is such simple financial reporting available from some of these other tools. For us to have the Time Elite, which offers us project management and ti- and um and payroll White Glove, it replaces the function as you've noted.
I don't wanna cut you off on QuickBooks, but I just wanna make one comment to you.
Eight thousand dollars a year.
I wanna make one comment to you. It has been advised by the auditor that QuickBooks is not sufficient for municipal accounting. The auditor will be out, it's on the calendar, he's next week, next year.
Fantastic.
We are open to having the discussion again, but at this time, it has been advised by the auditor that QuickBooks is not the best option for municipal accounting. It is not taken off the table. From, and I have said, from Cassell, we are open to changing, we are open to moving, we are open to adjusting.
Then let's talk about strictly payroll.
Let's just talk, but I just wanna let you know that that's why QuickBooks is we're circling back to that at a later date, but at this time, we've been advised that.
And all the audit materials from last year will be my first um query for the public records, but okay, payroll. Uh I I went through your, I went through your, I want all the material provided to the the auditor. But um the the notes that you took about QuickBooks were not accurate that you provided in there. Um it is, as you noted, it's online. Um you didn't reference the all the timekeeping, that's part of that full function. Um you made it sound like there was still work, but you only had five, so it was a you know, I felt like if we were back to the beginning of the year when I was told, I think it might have been for months, but certainly for weeks, like Cassell is free. And I I just, the lack of integrity in these processes is infuriating. Okay, I absolutely accept that the residents want the status quo, I'm not running for anything, I'm a resident that watches the abuse of money. There are other solutions that are tens of thousands of dollars less and give us far better outcomes. The payroll is an example. Geo fencing, we should be tracking for all the allocations you do, how this equipment is used. But you can save information, you can save money even in not having translocators with some of these softwares. And none of that is assessed. Instead, we're worried about, it'll make it easier for staff. And even though this was all upsetting the staff earlier, now we're telling staff they're gonna have a slightly different job, but it's okay when we tell them. And I just wanna call out the extraordinary lack of integrity that goes on in this room and the waste of money. And it's it's embarrassing to even be here.
Leave. Please.
You're leaving. I'm sorry, Andrew.
Said, please.
Please leave. I'm sorry to express something, Mayor, I'm ready to get in touch.
I just I just wanna take a second, I just wanna take a second. I respect that you have brought up ideas like this. And oftentimes it has to do with timing. And oftentimes, we we did have staff that was resistant to change and we have had these discussions. And there has been internal discussions about giving Cassell a chance, getting people adjusted. This is brand new technology to a lot of people, changes that have uh technology changes that haven't been made. There is, has to be a little grace to an understanding that not everybody is as technology technologically adaptable as every, as we'd like them to be, so there's an understanding of what skills our staff has and what skills that they're growing into. And while I understand your frustration with some of the technology choices, I also respect that you have brought up ideas about how to be more efficient, how to be more cost efficient. You aren't saying those things and they're not heard. Often it has to do with timing and where we're at in the process, so I do wanna acknowledge that you have brought up ideas that have value and have merit and we get to them within the process. This isn't saying we did this, you know, without any input from anybody at this council. I want to respect that your input is valued and sometimes it shows back up in timing that might not be on your personal timelines, and I'm sorry that 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 you don't agree with when it's brought up or how it's brought up. But here we are looking for ways to be more affordable and more efficient in the process. And I think that's, those are all things that I have heard from this council that we value. If you do not want this to move forward, do not vote for it to move forward. If you do value what we're trying to bring here and how we're trying to be more efficient with the spending and reduce the heartache on staff and hopefully in turn that then best benefits the residents because we're spending three thousand dollars less a year on this technology and can do something that's more efficient or better. Document scanning, permitting, you know, we'd love to, you know, go into how to make those things more efficient. This brings up, brings up three thousand dollars a year for other technologies, so I apologize if you're offended by the process, but I just want you to know that the things that you bring to the table are heard and the timing is not always right to do them in that moment. But we are getting to a place of, we are trying to be efficient and we are trying to focus on affordability, we have all been working on that, so if you don't like Paylocity, let us know why. Other council members, if you like Paylocity, don't like Paylocity, please let us know why. And that will give staff direction to move forward with your permission or go in a different direction. So I'd love to hear from other council members.
Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
I uh have spent quite a bit of time um in City Hall. Uh and I have had several conversations with our payroll clerk um about frustration um and I am pleased with the selection of Paylocity. Uh at this point, I am more pleased that our payroll clerk understands that we have decided to move in this direction and that she is on board with it and she will be able to help in other areas. Um and uh and I I appreciate the professionalism that you have brought to this discussion. Uh Suzanne, I would like to um echo the thought that, I mean, your your comments have not been unheard.
Please don't. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not interested in it. Now, this has been a year and if you wanna address why we were told, no, Diane, because it's.
Did everybody get a chance?
I'd be, yeah, I'd like to say about Paylocity.
Well, I'd like to hear more about why you support Paylocity and the features as opposed to the other ones. I just wanted a little more information about that from you.
I'm finished with my thought.
Sorry, go ahead.
I will, I will call on people to discuss as we need to. Um do you have something?
I I don't have any comment at the moment. I appreciate the work that Shelley's done on this, something that that in her view is a benefit to the city, I uh respect that.
Likewise.
Jenny, did you have anything?
Um I I've been working with QuickBooks and both my companies have been working QuickBooks. And honestly, if I could switch out of it, I would, for a multitude of reasons, I'm in the nonprofit field. It's not as robust for us as I'd like it to be. Um I can do things with it, but if it's costing me a lot of money, I'm the Michael keeper and my accountant. The I C A D P has been used by, I think the sheriff office used them or is it? There is now. But based on the the cost, I'm, I feel comfortable at this point, especially since there's no long-term contract that we are able to provide the same of we're able to do payroll and provide it fairly at a at a essentially a better level of service because there'll, there'll be less time wasted on it. And so I think that we'll be open to Paylocity at this time unless there was something else we'll consider would be a wise decision from receiving them.
Mayor Mayhew.
Mm-hmm.
And in understanding and empowering your staff, having Marcy be behind this, that's for me. And that's the first step because forcing technologies onto people and if it doesn't fit, it has to be pretty fun and playing the amount of time that's being spent. A lot of time is being spent and yes, this has been brought to the table before at that time. Our staff wasn't ready, you are in the trenches doing this daily, weekly and um and I trust your judgment, if it's not, if we're saving money, saving time, I don't see why um we would buy what our staff's recommending.
There isn't any other special, but I mean.
I need to approve uh resolution number twenty-five dash three eight. The resolution of the state of Idaho to approve and authorize the mayor to sign an agreement pursuant to Idaho code sixty-seven dash twenty-eight oh four or twenty-eight oh three four, how do I say that? I think it's been under five hours. With Paylocity for payroll services on a monthly basis and amount not to exceed five fifty per month.
Sorry.
Councilmember Bergen?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Councilmember Obenoff?
Yes.
Council President Shay?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Mahoney?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you all, and it's um. I really wish much to meet you.
I mean, those two resolutions that we did deal with in the consent, the attention. I think, with regarding Kristen Black's reappointment and then the transfer of mine to the treasurer, spider state treasurer.
We didn't pull them from the consent.
Yeah.
For the historic.
That's it.
Now.
I thought it was just the two G and the.
Yeah, they voted, they said the gender is cool.
Yes, yes.
My apologies, Tom, I didn't hear that you wanted to pull them that.
Formally, I mean, formally, well, maybe you just didn't like the idea of them being.
You have a question, I heard you say.
Um you know, I don't have a question on the transfer, I think that's great and Kristen Black's, they go to conferences, give her the varsity and I was the order appointment. There were two resolutions relating to P and Z members last.
Mm-hmm.
They're both the same thing, I've sent a chat to the other, this dude never you dealt with this in the same way. I thought John Kirk's was one of the two that need to be reappointed.
John Kirk's and Eric Kirk's, I don't.
It's what happened.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there's a matchup here.
Future we.
Uh yeah, I I have taken your feedback and we will make adjustments on these, on those. But if you feel.
Uh this, uh well, I I just think resolutions are not open, but I said that, so I have a second year amendment for your motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
All right.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've never seen one. I'm saying that's good. I don't knew.
You definitely not, they've been.
Haley does it.
Happening for a while lately, Dan.
That's, I mean.
Yes. Driving.
Can't keep.
For jail. But. I'm scared. My whole, for the after all, stunned out.
Uh.
Cheap with a folder with.
A wife is.
No.
No, I mean, not too much. Oh, cuz I need that like.
I think it's fine. It's for close tomorrow. Well, that's not a issue. Well, no, Wednesday.
Yes, yes, well, I. I don't have to be going that way.